That person.
Now, as you know, the council approved going forward on two items. The first, an ordinance that would enhance arrest authority for your street service investigators. What will that enhancement be and how will it help enforcement?
Well, what the, one of the key provisions of the enhanced authority, it makes it an actual misdemeanor crime to fail to comply with a lawful order issued by the Bureau of Street Services. Currently, we can issue a cleanup order, cleanup notice, but we don't have any teeth behind it from a legal perspective to make the person responsible clean up the illegal dumping. This ordinance gives us the power that we could actually charge it as a crime to fail to comply with such an order.
The other measure, of course, going to the city attorney would authorize administrative penalties, as they're called. That sounds a little benign. Doesn't sound like it has anything to do with illegal dumping, but if you would, please explain for our viewers how the penalties might actually work.
The importance of the administrative fine program is, again, the occasions where we're not able to actually witness the illegal dumping. Under California law, for us to charge it as a crime, we have to make witness the dumping take place, one of the investigators. So obviously, on a number of occasions, we're going to be searching through the trash and debris trying to find out who's responsible. In those cases, this ordinance allows us, in addition to cleanup fees, to charge an administrative fine. It's a graduated fine. First offense in 12 months is $500. Second offense is $750. And the third offense, $1,000. If we have four violations in one calendar year, then it is charged as a criminal offense. This also allows us to charge the fine in addition to any cleanup costs incurred by the Bureau. We think that'll be a very significant deterrent for illegal dumping in Los Angeles.
Financial penalties, fines, whatever you call them, administrative penalties, have been tried out in other communities. Do you have a feel for how successful or not they have already been in other places?
Yes, Butte County, one of the places that we looked at the pattern, our ordinance after, had a 75% reduction in illegal dumping once they instituted an administrative fine program along with dedicated enforcement personnel.
In the course of your enforcement, you work, of course, with other agencies, including the LAPD. How does that relationship work?
We work very closely with the Los Angeles Police Department, and in fact, it is through a memorandum of agreement that we're authorized to have the authorities that we exercise related to arrests, vehicle impounds, and other law enforcement type activities. So it is an extremely cooperative program that we have working with the Los Angeles Police Department. And in fact, we've recently come to an agreement with the LAPD to increase our activities, particularly in the South LA area, using the resources of both departments together to make a more effective dent in illegal dumping in the areas of the cities that are having the hardest impact from illegal dumping. But it's not just the police department. We also work very closely with the Neighborhood Prosecutor Program in the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. We interact with various state agencies, such as the Environmental Protection Agency, the California Department of Fish and Game, as well, who assist us with illegal dumping related issues for areas under their purview.
You just made reference a couple of times to the fact that there are many areas in the city where you do have, I guess you would call them hotspots of illegal dumping. What is common about these areas, or is it just all kinds of different places around the city? What sorts of places?
Generally, we're talking about areas that are alleys, are secluded streets, dead end streets, places of very little activity in the night hours, early morning hours, where it is very easy to dump without being detected. In areas, particularly the south area of the city, you'll find that the highly impacted dumping areas are generally going to be alleys, areas under freeway overpasses. So the unique characteristic, obviously, is the seclusion of the area, especially during non-business hours.
Obviously, there are some hill slopes that end up with illegally dumped materials, too. People just pull off the side of the road and unfortunately toss them.
That's correct. And being as large as we are, the city of Los Angeles, we experience almost every type of illegal dumping that occurs. We have an example of it, unfortunately, here in our city. But we do think with the new, the new authorities and the new fines, that we will be able to make an impact.
Speaking of the fines, once they are collected, do they go to your department to help with enforcement, or are they just directed into the city's general fund?
As proposed, the new ordinance would allow those fines to be, to go back to the department and to be specifically used for illegal dumping enforcement. This would help with our proactive surveillance program to augment the funding there so that we could do even more surveillance on those areas where we're experiencing the most impact of illegal dumping.
I understand you're about to launch a media campaign on this subject. Tell us, in fact, I guess you're launching it at this moment. Tell us about the media campaign.
Well, we're working closely with the City Attorney's Office and also our Public Affairs Office to launch a campaign based on the "Don't Dump on LA" slogan to really get the impact out, such as Caltrans has done with their program about California roadways, to get the public to become aware of the impact that it has on the community, particularly the cost. One of the things that we think the message may not have gotten out properly is that the city is spending $12 million that could be more effectively spent on the infrastructure of the city just to mitigate illegal dumping. Unfortunately, many people have the attitude that if I leave something on the street, the city's going to pick it up anyway. And they don't see it as an additional cost to the city because they see it as something their taxes have already paid for. Well, the city does have services to help you when you need trash pickup. As a matter of, the, an example, the bulky item pickup program that has been very successful in helping especially multifamily housing units in getting rid of these types of trash and debris without creating an illegal dumping system on the street. So we want to make sure that the public is fully aware of all the legal resources available to dispose of their trash and the benefit to the community by redirecting that $12 million into services so dearly needed.
You just brought up the bulky item pickup. I think we should probably remind viewers that that's a different bureau in the Department of Public Works. That's the Bureau of Sanitation. You can schedule, you actually have to make an appointment for it on your normal pickup day by dialing 311, of course. We've talked about trash and other things that sound kind of benign, but I imagine you've run into a lot of pretty dangerous things that are dumped as well and have to deal with them differently.
Yes, we have. In fact, under California law, it's a felony to dump hazardous materials in any public property. And we have had occasions where the things that we've found in the trash and debris are toxic substances, medical waste, and other things that could be a serious public health danger to the public. And so this is also another aspect of illegal dumping that we hope to curb with some of the enhanced arrest powers that have been granted to our street services investigators that will allow them also to make arrests for these more serious issues.
Do you find that in some cases, these are businesses dumping things that they otherwise would have to pay some sort of a fee to get rid of legally and properly?
Yes, we do. It's very common that a lot of the dumping is done for financial gain, either by those involved in the types of business, as you mentioned, where there's a higher cost to get rid of those items. Things like waste tires, which we find a lot of in the dumping, of the illegal dumping around the city. We also find that a lot of the dumping comes from those who are contracted to pick up waste. And so obviously, their financial incentive is not to pay the tip fees when they go to a legal dump site.
Finally, what should our viewers, or anyone for that matter, what should they do if they witness or know about illegal dumping within the city of Los Angeles?
We advise everyone to immediately call 311 so that we can send out proper personnel to deal with the illegal dumping immediately. If the illegal dumping is in progress and we receive the notification through 311, we will send investigators out to hopefully apprehend those who are in violation of our city ordinances. If the material has already been dumped and we need, need to clean it up, 311, again, is still the same number to call for either enforcement or for the cleanup of illegal dumping. And if you do witness it and you're unable to call us as soon as it occurs, any information that you could provide for us about the violator would be helpful, particularly things like license plate numbers, description of the vehicle driven, a description of the person that was doing the illegal dumping. All that information can be very helpful for us in actually identifying the violator. And if your information leads to a successful conviction, the city offers a $1,000 reward for that type of information.
I'm glad you managed to get that in. Bureau of Street Services Chief Investigator Gary Harris, thanks for coming back on Council Week in Review.
Thank you.
Again, the items to enhance arrest authority for street service investigators and implement administrative penalties for illegal street dumping will go to the city attorney to prepare ordinances for final city council approval. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. And just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM on Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending August 8th, 2008. On behalf of Efrem Monobot and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for August 12, 2008. I hope everybody had a good weekend. And we are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues Wendy Grul, Tom Labange, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zein. We are awaiting other council members' attendance in order to constitute a quorum. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weiss are excused today, but we are expecting everybody else. So if Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Cardenas, and Councilmember Alarcon will please make their way down right away. We are awaiting you, and pursuant to council rules, those members are now late. We are here, as I mentioned, in Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We meet the first Friday of the month, whenever we can, in Van Nuys City Hall, in our efforts to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, and we want to welcome our viewers who are watching us on television through the city's cable system. We also rebroadcast each evening, and we are available online as well. If you'd like to watch webcasts of the council meeting, that can be done by visiting our homepage. The web address for that is www.lacity.org. Click on the links on the left hand of the page, and you can watch us live, or catch any of our archived footage of past meetings, which is there on the web. It's also hyperlinked to our past agendas, so just visit any of our past agendas, find the issue that is most of interest, click on that, and you can watch the proceedings of the council on that given issue. We also have a service through our telephones called Council Phone, in which you can call the number 213-621-CITY, and listen to any of the council meetings, as well as any of our committee meetings, live on your phone. We have now a quorum, so Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Ms. President?
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval in a minute.
Mr. Alarcon moves. Mr. Zein seconds. Without objection, those will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Next order of business.
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right. Mr. Labange, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And if I can ask everybody to please rise in chambers for our salute to the flag. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I ask it all. Join and place your right hand over your heart. And after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and I know we've all enjoyed watching the flag waved in China during the Olympics, and certainly the competition of all of the winners from around the world has been wonderful to see, and a few Angelinos doing pretty well out there on the volleyball courts and in the swimming pool. Next order of business, please.
Ms. President, do you wish to go through the agenda?
Yes, let's run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 3 are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing. There is a request to receive and file those matters.
Okay. If there's no objection, let's go ahead on 1 through 3 and receive and file those. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are received and filed. Next items, please.
Item 4 is the historic downtown property and business improvement district notice for public hearing. Council should close the public hearing, and the ballot tabulation will be at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Without objection, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. And, sorry, require a vote on it?
No action.
Okay. We'll continue that for the ballot tabulation. Next item, please.
Item 5 is the building and safety confirmation of lien, and the department recommends that that matter be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been paid.
Okay. Without objection, let's go ahead, prepare the roll on receiving and filing, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is received and filed. Next item, please.
Item 6 is an item notice for public hearing. The applicant has withdrawn the application for the conditional use permit.
Okay. We do have one card, so we'll just call that special, even though applicant has withdrawn that. So, Mr. Schultz, if that influences your decision to speak or not, just let us know, but we'll keep that in the queue otherwise. Next items, please.
Items 7 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 26, there is a request to continue that matter to September 9.
Okay. Why don't we hold on the desk the ordinances until we have 12 members? Mr. Rosendahl?
Twenty, no, no, 25.
25, okay, for Mr. Rosendahl.
And also 27.
Okay. And 27. We'll make it a twofer for Mr. Rosendahl. Other specials? Mr. Labange?
Yeah. Eight, 23, 27, 30, 36.
Hold on, we're not quite up there yet. This is through 29, so it was 8, 23, what was the next one?
27, it's already called.
27, also with Mr. Rosendahl. It's called that special. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, if we can take up the balance, please, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. I had a note to continue 26 to the 9th till tomorrow. Is that, I'm sorry, till September 9?
September 9.
Was that, did we do that?
Yes, Ms. President, you did.
Next items, please.
Items 30 through 73 are items for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Items 30 and 31 are commission of reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, and we have cards in the public on 30 as well. We'll call 33 special for Mr., for cards, and Mr. Alarcon also needs to recuse himself on that item, so we'll make sure that that is taken up separately. We also have some other cards, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Ms. President. Item 36.
Okay.
37.
Uh-huh.
43.
Yep.
52.
Okay.
66, 67, 68, 72, and 73.
Okay. And 65, we have for Mr. Alarcon. Call that special. And Mr. Labange, you had some from before? Which ones were those?
Yeah, 30, 36, and 52.
30, 36, and 52.
Please.
For Mr. Labange. Any other, which one? If we could call 65 for Mr. Alarcon. And any other specials, colleagues? We'll open and close the public hearings for the remainder, and if we can hold, oh, we do have 12 members now, so let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. We can go to the next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item 74 is an item notice for public hearing, and if there are no cards, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. If we can send 63 forthwith without any objection from Mr. Parks, and if there is, yes, Ms. Perry on 74?
On item 74, I need to send it back to Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, we'll send 74 back to Public Works Committee. If we can go to the next items, please.
Items 75 and 76 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 75 or 76 special from the council? If not, we have those items before us. Let's go ahead and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item 77 through 80 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any specials? 78 for Mr. Alarcon. That leaves us with 77, 79, and 80. Anybody wishing to call special?
79.
79? Okay.
79, and if we could take it out of order as soon as possible.
We'll take that as the first right after the commissioners. Okay? After we hear public comment, okay? That leaves us with 77 and 80. Any specials there? If not, go ahead and prepare the roll on those two, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We can set, take up number 7 now that we have 12 members as well. Please open the roll on 7. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. On 8? Okay.
Eight oh.
Oh, sorry, number?
Eight zero.
Oh, eight zero. Sorry, eight zero, yes. Forthwith for Mr. Parks on 80, without objection. That'll take us to public comment, and our first speaker is Lucille Caruso. If you'd like to come forward, Lucille, and after that will be Zuma Dog. If I could ask everybody to please minimize their conversations, and please direct your attention to the public for public comment. Thank you.
I'm, I'm from-
Good morning.
Good morning. Before I moved here from Chicago in the 90s, I researched.
Go ahead, we'll credit your time. We just couldn't quite hear you. Go ahead.
I just want to make a quick point. Before I moved here from Chicago in the 90s, they said that there was like, what delayed me from moving was, was under the assumption there was no public transportation in Los Angeles. And so, I'm just too shy to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Zuma Dog is our next speaker, and after that we'll go out to Donna Herrman.
Yes, good morning, City Council. Good morning, City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for everybody who I met over the weekend, who commented they liked watching me here. I appreciate that. That's what inspires me and brings me back here. Got a lot of material posted at zumatimes.com, council members, if you could read it. I've got a lot of news stories, because I've also noticed that today's agenda, I mean, these agendas are getting out of control. I've never seen an agenda like this, so I'll be blogging about it. Things like cable companies, they'll be increasing their rates, tons of grant money. Oh, coming up on the agenda, we gotta take $1.6 million for a Guadalajara book fair. That's right, 1.6 million. It's Tom Labange's item, $1.6 million. He wants to give it to Guadalajara State, and, I mean, federal money. We'll be talking about that later. But right now, I'm here, I came down here today to alert the public as to the biggest thing I've come across in my two and a half years in City Hall. It's the affordable housing ballot bamboozle that Mayor Antonio Villarosa has on the ballot in November, and it's gonna take between now and then to alert the masses, because what the mayor is saying in this, it says, "Most notably, we need this affordable housing measure to pass to get our Prop 1C money for emergency shelter for battered women, their children, elderly, and disabled." Okay? So, we need to pass this, people, or we don't get this money. However, Zumatimes has learned through LA Weekly, this money has been applied for and granted to the Grand Avenue Project Cement Park, subsidized heavily. The Arab Emirates family of Dubai is involved in this project with related, and you think you're voting for emergency shelter for women, and for battered women, and for, you know, working families. It's going to the cement park that's been heavily subsidized. You must vote no on all these measures.
Thank you. Donna Herrman out in Van Nuys is our next speaker. After that will be Rick Nightingale. Good morning.
Hi. I hope you remember Mirem Fogler, too. Anyway, this is Donna Herrman. We can't put all our city troubles on the backs of a select number of 22,000 city employees. It's not right. Councilman Zein said the whole city should take care of this problem, not just a few. But now, some city employees' health benefits are being changed. Cost of medicine co-pay is gonna double or nearly double. It should be everybody, police, fire, and yes, city council, too. It should only be on the shoulders of a certain number of employees. Unions don't choose to fight it, but where's your backbone? Fight it. That's why employees give union dues. Not for you to agree meekly with, "I wish I didn't have to be that way." It's supposed to stop, uh, we're supposed to stop furloughs of city employees. I thought when we passed Prop S, that was gonna do it. You lied. I thought our trash tax was gonna do that. You lied. Third lie, you're out. City employees, you need to stand up for yourself, like the hotel workers do. They do it, they don't tell other people to let them do it. Don't wait for a union. It won't happen. If the city plays, stand up and fight for your rights. Everyone pays, or no one pays. Mr. Garcetti, you're always fighting for a living wage and hotel workers. Why don't you fight for the city employees? Aren't taxpayers spending enough for this slew of new taxes? Why give all these sweetheart deals and give money to the CRA? Say the city's employees, uh, furlough, anyway, furlough from that. Aren't city employees as important as rich developers? City councils, show us that you care, even if it's only for publicity and get yourself re-elected, 'cause remember, city employees are the ones out there that can vote you in or vote you out. So if you let this go through, we're gonna vote you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna Herrman, and just as a point of information, we very much love our city employees, and the furloughs that were proposed are no longer on the table, so thank you for your comments with that. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker. After that is Mirem Fogler. Morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. And I turned around and said a couple of things Wednesday, and my wife, she wanted to see what I said, and something got bleeped. I don't understand it. Maybe it was a problem, but it was regarding, I wanted to know when the, when the Schedule 40 is supposed to come out of committee, and for the, we'd like to know how the, the council is on it, is for it or against it, so the public knows how they stand. And I sure hope it ain't bleeped today, because I'd like to know about that. Then I turned around, I couldn't believe when I read Sunday, on, "Any gang join hands for a day." That's great, they all play ball, but then when I kept reading it, and they want the public to pay for funerals and stuff like that, because of the, when they do have a gang, God forbid somebody does get killed, it's a tragedy, I realize, but since the public's supposed to pay for it? Let's get serious. I mean, you people have the power, like I said before. You people makes the rules. They say 10% of the people turn around or cause the problems in the gangs. Okay, that means 90% do not. Like I said before, you turn around, can turn around, and you arrest them, I don't think you call ICE when you let them out of jail, like you should, like you're supposed to, by the law, but no. Order 40, and our chief don't wanna do that, and a lot of you, the council, don't wanna do that, but that's the material. That's the law. And like I said before, I was told when I was a kid, you have to honor your family. You don't do things to, to downgrade your family. My friend, a lot of my friends went to Juvenile Hall. I never made it there. I turned around, knew right from wrong, and went home when I was supposed to, so things wouldn't happen to me. These people don't do it. If they have any gumption for their family, honor their family or otherwise, they would turn around and not do problems like this. Or they could be turned around and sent back if they are illegal, and go home, and then the family can live with, "They sent us home because you did a stupid thing." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. Mirem Fogler is our next speaker, and then we'll come back here to Council Chambers for our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to speak against the Coalition of Unions. I spoke to lady Judy Friday, she could have Lenny call me back, she never did. Let me tell you the scoop here. The thing is that you wanna increase the copayments on, for prescriptions, for me. That means I'm gonna be paying twice as much, and because of the city taking 18.25 million dollars from the, from the city employees, 22,000 workers, who are not even part of Warren Power, make 20% less than the Warren Power, Police and Fire Department, and the rest of the city here, you people should be all picking up the tab to pay part of your prescription increases on your, for your copayments, just like us. If you're gonna do that to us, and you need to do it too, and we need to be together, not be just certain people getting, doing this, you're giving us a shaft to get the second time in the union contracts. Last six times, last six years, we were only getting 7%. Now, you're talking about copayment increase on our prescription, which is not right. And you paid the rest of, Dennis Zein said, back in last fall, he said that if we're, if we're not gonna do it, then we shouldn't have the city employees take anything here. So the furloughs was not a mandatory thing. This was a voluntary thing, and you can't force people to take furlough, and you can't make us take increase on our copayment, on our prescriptions. This is illegal, and it's against the contract. You people need to be together with us, not just that, because, you get free cars, you get free gas, free cell phones. Why should I subsidize, why do I need to pay $5 more to subsidize? You're getting your cars, and your gas, and your cell phones. This is not right, and illegal intent, this is not fair. The rest employees of the city should be paying the same, and we should get paid the same as Department of Water and Power. This is absolutely illegal, what the whole union and coalitions are doing here. And I'm talking to Julie Butcher, I'm talking to Barbara Maynard, I'm talking about the whole group that's doing all this little thing behind, behind the scenes, and this should've gone before the city employees, they should've had meetings. This is not right.
Our next speaker, thank you, is Langangi Chase Siame. After that will be Olga Hall. Good morning.
Good morning. Present-day politics and our new generation. Confound all conspirators of victimization, oppression, and subjugation. I am a registered Democrat, a right-wing conservative Democrat, and a proponent of the MMD Party in Zambia. We introduced, we introduced multi-party politics, plural politics in Zambia, for the very first time in 1991. Former President Kenneth David Kawunda, with the unit party, representing a one-party system of government, lost the presidential elections of 1991. Our newly-elected leader was former President Frederick Chiluba, who led the country for two terms only. He passed on the mantle through a democratic process to the current president, Mr. Levy Patrick Monawassa, in 2001.
Excuse me, Ms. President, I'm not sure if this is within the jurisdiction of the City of Los Angeles. If we could please keep it on stuff that's under our jurisdiction, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, I think this is, this is pertinent to our current political-
Unfortunately, we have many things that are pertinent, but it has to be directly under our jurisdiction, so if you could make sure it's under the city's jurisdiction, we appreciate your abiding by that.
I understand that, but I think this is very, very important. I need to make this announcement.
I'm sorry, sir, we have to be strict about rules. You can continue speaking, but it really does have to be particularly under our jurisdiction. This is not so much an open forum as a forum to hear public comment on the City of Los Angeles business, so as much as you can keep it to that, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just continue anyways. I personally have issues to discuss with the MMD leadership as it's displayed-
This is now out of order, this is not under our jurisdiction, so thank you very much for your comments, and we'll go to our next speaker now. Thank you. Olga Hall is our next speaker, and we'd be happy, you can always write, members, people are interested in things other than the city business, but that's not what this public comment is for right here. Thank you very much. Olga Hall is our next speaker, and then Candido Maris will follow. Good morning, Ms. Hall.
Good morning, council members, and Mr. President. A hearing will be conducted to approve the permit for the expansion of the Autry National Center on Monday, August 18, at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall, Room 1020. In 1986, the Autry requested a permit for the construction of the Autry National Center in Griffith Park. The Board of Referred Powers granted that permit against the wishes of the community. 114 letters, written letters were received. 112 were against the project. The Board of Referred Powers ignored the wishes of the community. Councilman Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilman Parks, Councilman Reyes, Councilman Rosendahl, today, you are the Board of Referred Powers. There are 7,000 petitions, plus 70 coalitions, including three neighborhood councils. They are all asking you to hold the Autry accountable to the commitments in the merger. You cannot ignore the community as your predecessors did. If you give them the permit, you will be part of the demise of the first museum in Los Angeles, the Southwest Museum. You will be accessor to the looting of the Southwest Museum. You cannot say you did not know. The actions of the Autry have demonstrated that their true intentions from the very start were to take the collection of the Southwest Museum. Your responsibility is to protect the icons, the history of the city. Councilman Weezer must stand and protect the Southwest Museum. It is in his district. Time to stand up to all of you, and to protect the icons of the city. I'll repeat, I'll repeat, the meeting is August 18, at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall, Room 1020.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate your comments today. Candido Maris is our final speaker for general public comment. Very good morning, Ms. Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I want to thank this council and the mayor for standing up to DWP and canceling some contracts last week. You know, I've been here since 2004, and over and over again, I've come before you and told you that there's corruption, and I'm only speaking of the procurement contract area. There's been so many improvements. Mr. Pastoris has done wonderful jobs there, Mr. Nahai is trying to do his best, but when a city worker came to you and told you that there was fraud on a janitorial contract, no one helped her. I have a list of five of those individuals who came before the committee, who have died. I'm gonna pass out Mrs. Hahn, you were the only one that listened to these people, but I'm gonna pass them out to all of you, and I want you to see the names on there. They came before your committee to testify, but they're dead today because of the-
Mr. President, the speaker should be speaking to the whole council now, just one individual.
I was speaking to the full council, because the full council did nothing to protect these people, did nothing to do, and I've never been disrespectful of this council. I've been here since 91. Why would you allow what's taking place over at DWP procurement to take place? You saw somebody lied to you. He lied to you. I'm not bringing that up to hurt anybody. The fact was, he was, he lied. There's so many good things that are taking place at DWP, but the procurement process, the contracts are wrong, and there's nothing being done about that. And I would ask, I'm gonna pass these out to you, because I want you to see these names, and I never want you to forget these names, but I'm gonna have to cut out the top part, because I don't want anybody being retaliated against because they were able to send this over to me. Again, Mr. President, council members, I've never been disrespectful to you, I've always asked and been very appreciative of all the work that you've done. I've always tried to stand up for those things that you people have done, to make the city a better place, but when it comes to what has happened over at the DWP and the custodians, these are just poor people who are trying to keep their jobs. And Ms. Hahn, thank you for listening, because I know everybody else is listening, but they're always doing other things, but thank you for always looking at me, because you know what? It doesn't matter if you're the president, or the mayor of this city, or a janitorial, custodial person, you have the same rights. You have the same rights.
Thank you very much.
And I'm not gonna leave here, because I'm not gonna be-
Thank you, Ms. Maris. Okay. That will end our public comment for now. We will go now to the next item called in the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Maris, if you can please-
Item 30 is the reappointment of Ms. Ina Lee Raymer to the Cultural Affairs Commission.
Okay. If we can ask the nominee to move forward, and if there's any obstructions, if you could please remove them. Thank you. Ms., if we can ask the nominee to come forward here? Please come forward, our nominee.
Before the record, the speaker is repeatedly violating the rules at the quorum.
Thank you. And like to recognize the Chair of our Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, Mr. Labange, to say a few words.
Thank you very much, members of the council, to the audience here. Lee Raymer is one of the great art patrons of our community along history, was a great special assistant to then-the-city councilman Joel Wax, who brought art into our equation here in such a strong way. She continues that as Mayor Antonio Villarosa's member on this very important commission. Lee, if you want to express your passion a little, I know everybody knows you, but so the public can hear, and we ask for an eye vote. Thank you, Lee Raymer.
Thank you. We have Ms. Grul next, and then we'll get to Mr. Rosendahl.
On my time, I want Lee Raymer, Commissioner Extraordinary, to tell her passion about arts.
Please, Ms. Raymer, and then we'll hear from Ms. Grul. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Labange, and thank you for passing me through the committee. Thank you for my, to my city councilman, Bill Rosendahl. President Garcetti, thank you all. I love the city. I've been serving on the commission for a long time, because I care about it, I care about the city, and I'm very excited about what we do. We have a lot, we, the commission, has a lot to do with the look of the city. As one of the architects on our recent design review program said, the outside wall of every building of the city, whether it's residential or commercial or anything, is the inside wall of the city. So when we drive around the city, we are looking at the architecture, and that is our inside, and it's very important that we cover architecture and public art. The other thing, so I care about that a lot. The other thing we do is serve, is serve the huge cultural diversity of our city, and truthfully, our new, our new general manager, Olga Garay, has made a huge difference. She is always out there, I'm so proud to be a part of this, because she lets the city be present at all these different events, and it reflects very well on the city. I don't know if you know this, but we just, we, the department, I'm a commissioner, not the department, just got a grant of $1,006,000 from the NEA to send Los Angeles artists, specific grant to Guadalajara, to represent our artists, and I think something like that is so important and impressive. It shows the National Endowment for the Arts is recognizing the importance of our department. So that's why I'm so proud of it and glad to be here.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know others will stand to say great things about Lee Raymer. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Grul is our next speaker, then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. And, Lee, you're right, you're right, Mr. Labange, we'll say great things about you. How long have you been on the commission?
Well, I think it's somewhere between 13, 14 years.
So you have spanned...
Oldest living, maybe?
Well, that's great, that continuity that you have and your commitment to, as you say, the cultural aspects of Los Angeles and how important it is, and your comments about Olga really, you know, resonate, because you have been here for that period of time, and she's a great breath of fresh air to the city and what we're able to do on cultural institutions and art and all of the things that we want to see in Los Angeles. I think the biggest travesty sometimes is that we don't spend enough on the kinds of things that I know you all advocate for, and we hope to remedy that as our budget hopefully grows in the years to come and be able to, and the economy changed, to be able to do more of that. But you've not taken that as a pitfall, but more of a challenge to get others to kind of help and develop and have been a catalyst. And so we look forward, I know they're planning a master plan and a lot of things that are occurring, and I just want to thank you for that. And clearly, this is something you care about, and everyone has seen, each mayor has seen your value here in the City of Los Angeles. So I also stand to support your continuation on this great commission and for your efforts. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, you are a constituent of mine, for public to know, and I've known you for years, and I've known your husband and your brother-in-law, and you all have been quite contributors to the social fabric of the city. So first, I want to thank you straight out for that. Now, being reappointed, you've made it through a couple of administrations. You've been there for how many years?
With the commission, I worked for Joel Wax for a lot of years...
Yes, I know, I know.
...before, and then with the commission...
My brother.
The, um, Mayor Reardon appointed me, and I was reappointed by Mayor Han, and thank you to Mayor Villarosa for doing it to me, for me again.
Yeah, well, you're like our...
It's an honor and a privilege, honestly.
You're like the Valerie Shore of Public Works, who's also been able to get beyond politics, which is what we need to do, and deal with the public service of making the city a better place. And you're an example of someone that isn't into politics, you're into doing what needs to be done. So take a deep breath and tell me what you want to do going forward that hasn't been done, that those years of experience now have suggested we need to move forward on.
Well, I feel we've always been on a good track. It's just getting better and bigger and more important, and the city is now looking at a cultural, the process is starting for a cultural master plan, which sooner or later you will see. So I'm not sure yet, that's for the professionals, and I'm not sure yet how that's going to play out, but I do know that a lot of the things we've been doing over the years, serving the various districts in cultural centers, has been important, giving grants to artists and arts groups that serve all the different diverse groups is important. I think we should just do more and be better at it, serving seniors and children, music and children is very important, and our architectural review, as I said before, has to do with the look of the city, and these are very big expensive buildings that we pass on, and I think that's a major job for the department, for the commission.
And the new development day is a certain percent must go toward public art or something to do with art. How has that been going?
Well, we get a percent for art, I guess, on all construction other than residential, and that's been important. I think what's happened with the bed tax, the TOT, is our share has been diminished. I'm not sure of all the details, but I think the administration isn't paid for anymore of the department, and I feel the city should pay for the administration, so we get the full benefit of the bed tax. We don't as of this minute.
I appreciate you saying that, because, you know, we are a cultural center of the planet. I love to say Southern California is a microcosm of the Earth, it's got everybody here from everywhere, we're very rich in our texture, but New York and Chicago and other cities put a lot more toward art and culture, don't they?
Well, I have hope for us. I mean, I don't know what to say other than that, because we don't, and we have such a diverse community with so many artists, we have so much culture here, that we should be supporting it more. It makes it a more livable city.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate again and being a true public servant, somebody who's giving back to community, but I look forward to hearing your proposal from you of how we should move forward in more of a substantive way than we've done in the past, because I think from a tourist dollar standpoint, the more we do that and more we display our art, the more revenue comes in in a multiplier effect from tourism and other things.
Here, here, I agree.
Thank you, bless you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you again, Ms. Raymer, for your extraordinary service and your taste and your passion and everything else you've brought to this. We appreciate that very much. And with that, we do have, excuse me, cards from the public, which we'll take at this time. We have one card from Zuma Dog, and then we will take a vote. Yes, you can sit over there if you'd like. Wherever you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, future Commissioner, I hope. Cultural arts, very important.
If this, yeah.
Yes, cultural arts, very important. The great thing about Los Angeles, and maybe this could be used in a tourism ad for the cultures, Los Angeles, you can travel the world in a day. I wake up at the beach, I end up in Little Tokyo, Little Ethiopia, it's a great cultural diversity. I'm concerned, though, I hope the Commissioner can look into Prop 1A. Again, Zuma Dog, big concern. You always vote for something, you find the money goes for something else.
Mr. Dog, Prop 1A is not at all in the jurisdiction of the cultural affairs.
Excuse me, I'm talking about cultural arts, and I want this Commissioner to look into Prop 1A, because libraries are getting cut. Libraries are very important to...
Sorry, sir, the library commissioners are a separate commission. Sir, Mr. Dog, I will give you back your time, but the library commission is separate, Prop 1A is different, but if you please have anything to say about the Cultural Affairs Commission, we'd be happy to hear that right now. I think that's very clear, and we want to be very respectful of you, but please, I'll give you the time, sir, I already said that. So please address cultural affairs issues directly.
I would like to say for the record, my First Amendments were violated, because I was on point. I'll take it up on the blogosphere. Please go to zoomatimes.com. Some other things I'd like this Commissioner to look into, we need more vocations, culture-related at LAUSD. If you try to, we need to try to present kids with some things that can get them excited, that, you know, find their gift and cater to it, and you can do this through the cultural arts, and we're having less cultural arts, and if you can get the kids, you know, I was excited about music, I took bass and guitar lessons in school, I couldn't wait to wake up every day, go to school for the guitar, and then they suckered me into all the other things they taught me at the same time. So that's a tactic I hope we could take. Also, I hope the Commissioner looks into nonprofit abuse, because a lot of the cultural arts are funded through federal state money to the arts to support the cultures, and I'm here to say that the biggest fraud, waste, and abuse in the state is the nonprofits, the money never makes it in. So please look into that, because the communities are getting cheated, they fall into further disrepair, and I forgot, thank you for holding my time, yes, yes, he held the time, I'm just going to say that we need to make sure that all money for the kids and the cultural arts makes it into the programs and not into the pockets of the managers. Zoomatimes.com, take back the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog, and thank you for your adherence to those rules. That will close our public comment on this item. Please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Round of applause for our continuing Commissioner. Congratulations very much, and everything without objection we'll send forth with today, as this is the last week before we'll be in recess for two weeks starting next week. If we can take up item 31, and then Mr. Smith has asked for 79 out of order. 31, our next Commissioner, Mr. Bedrosian, if you'd like to come forward, and I know the Public Safety Committee waived this, so give you the opportunity to speak to the council about your interest in serving on the review commission, and thank you for putting yourself forward for a service to the people of Los Angeles.
My pleasure, sir. First and foremost, I want to thank the Police Department for all their hard work, in specific the Commission Investigation Division, under the leadership of Lieutenant Andre Dawson. They've been doing an unbelievable job the past three years I've been serving on the commission, and they deserve all the credit. We're just the people who serve the city, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Mr. Zine to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bedrosian, good morning.
Good morning.
How long have you served on that police permit review panel?
About three years now.
And what have you found the challenges to be?
Um, information usually, sometimes there is a gap of information that flows in on a specific calendar item, and I think the systems of the Police Department, now that they're being upgraded, have helped. In the past several years, we've seen a lot of the calendars that come forth regarding alarm permits or several other type of permits that we review are always running a little bit behind, several months behind. That's improved quite a bit, because I think the Police Department has made several changes in the administration, their administration and their computer systems to kind of get up to speed.
One item that is on the agenda today regarding the alarm systems, there's a lot of money in alarm systems that isn't being collected, people who don't get the permit.
Yes.
Alarm company contacts you, they'll put an alarm in, and it is the policy that the homeowner or the business go down and get the permit. We're changing that. And the new policy is going to be that the alarm companies have to get that permit, pay that $31, and they can charge obviously the customer, but we should be able to capture not only additional dollars, but register more of those alarms into the system, so more revenue and better accurate accounting of the alarms that we have in the City of Los Angeles. Can you comment on that system?
I think that that's an excellent idea, and that's a long time coming now.
If I could just reiterate, please, folks, if you can keep your conversations to a minimum or to take them out into the hallways so we can hear the speakers, and if I could ask Sergeants Arms for their assistance as well on both sides of the rope, thank you.
See how it's more quiet it is, so everybody can hear you now?
No, the action that you're taking regarding alarm permits being done through the alarm providers is actually a great step. I think that there is a huge gap with the amount of homeowners that have alarms in their homes that don't have permits, and it causes a lot of problems for the Police Department and for our commission when we're dealing with non-permitted households versus permitted households with regard to the fee breakdowns and how they're penalized and how we can track them. In the end, it's all about tracking and responding to the households when there is an alarm that goes off. Obviously, there is a huge problem with the amount of false alarms that are being responded to by Police Department, and that's something we have to work with the alarm companies on and, you know, come up with some sort of strategy and only cut down the amount of response time by the Police Department to a lot of the false alarms that are going on. I don't exactly know how that will be done, but I think that's necessary.
And there's the generation of the money that's generated...
Yes.
...from those in addition. A lot of people don't understand they have to get a permit, the alarm company sells them an alarm, sells them the monitoring, and not inform them about the permit. So I think we'll clear that up with this new ordinance that's going to take effect.
Absolutely. There's a huge amount of capital that's generated through permitted alarms with permits. I think that if we can get all the households that have alarms, that have, you know, to have permits, then there's going to be a lot more generation of revenue with regard to alarm permits.
And then just a couple more on the hookah lounges. We've got a lot of hookah lounges that are establishing themselves throughout the city. Does the police permit review panel license those?
I'm sorry, what type of lounges?
Hookah lounges, where they smoke that pipe with different flavor tobacco?
Recently, we were approached by the, I think it was the Special Task Force on Tobacco, and we're playing a small role in the, I want to say administration of those permits, but we don't have the primary responsibility of issuing those permits. I think that the Police Department and the panel has been in discussions on taking more of an active role. At this time, we do not give out hookah lounges or cigarette lounges at this time, but I know that we're in the, we're in the portion of it where we can control if there is a violation.
And is the commission fully staffed?
The commission is fully staffed at this time, yes.
And what about the assistance from the Police Department in handling administrative duties?
We're fully staffed. I think as far as administration is concerned, we're running smoothly.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Okay, with that, let's prepare the roll on the nomination and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner, and thank you again for your ongoing service. Round of applause for our Commissioner. If we can go to the next item, please.
Mr. President, you wish to take item 79 out of order.
Absolutely, without objection, Mr. Smith has asked for 79 out of order, seeing no objection. Mr. Smith.
Unified School District, We Build Program, come forward. Last week, we were going to hear this in committee due to the funeral of LA Sheriff Escalante. We had to cancel our committee, and so they didn't get a chance to make a presentation. It's rather timely, they wished to speak to the whole council, and I thought it would be appropriate to have him come forward to talk about the extraordinary benefits that accrue to the City of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, from the program that's being built at LA Unified School District, and so I'd like to ask you, go ahead and make your presentation. I know Mr. Weezer had some interest in it, and Ms. Perry also has some interest in it, but please go ahead and begin your presentation, and we'll take some questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Councilmen. Mr. President, good morning, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and give a presentation on LAUSD School Construction Program as it relates to job creation and workforce development. My name is Veronica Soto, I'm the Director of Contractor Relations and Small Business for the Facility Services Division. Our building program is the largest in the nation. $20 billion, $12.4 billion invested in new construction, $7.6 billion in modernization and repair. The economic impact of this construction program is extraordinary. We're looking at approximately 239,000 jobs, this is both direct and indirect, $12 billion in wages and $1.2 billion in local and state taxes. Our future workload, as you can see, 2008 and 2009 are basically the busiest years for us. We're looking at over $1.5 billion in construction activity during those years, and with that, you know, opportunity and that level of work, we have a lot of program challenges. The two major program challenges that we have are contractor capacity and labor capacity. These are the two areas where we're trying to cultivate a labor force and at the same time recruit more contractors to do work with the school district. Along with challenges come opportunities, and one of those major opportunities is to actually develop a workforce development strategy that's going to cultivate not only a contractor base, but also the skilled labor force that we need. As you can see here, we start off with cultivating our small contractor base and then moving forward and cultivating our local district residents to begin a career in construction, and then we take a further step back and we actually cultivate our young people in high school to basically enter architecture, engineering, and construction industries. Our small business program is quite simple, it's 25% small business goal that applies to all district contracts, and this is basically in great benefit to and leadership presented by former Board President Jose Weezer, who implemented the policy at LAUSD, and because of that, $1.86 billion has been awarded to small contractors since July 2003. We do have programs geared to cultivating our small contractor base, and that's our small business boot camp program, and we also have a bond finance assistance program to help those contractors eliminate that barrier to bonding and also working capital. Our project labor agreement has been, I would say, our strongest tool in getting the local participation levels that we need. Not only do we get the labor that we need, but we also have a 50% local worker participation goal, which enables us to then implement our We Build program. Our We Build program is a 10-week pre-apprenticeship construction training program. We provide training to local district residents at seven district-wide locations, and as you can see, even though our goal is 50%, we've been able to already encourage 32% level participation on our workforce. Total local workers have been over 16,000. Individuals of those, $194.2 million have been given in wages, of that amount, $0.27 is the actual average wage. Not only are we building our capacity, but we're also encouraging the inclusion of new apprentices into the labor trade. apprentices into the labor trade unions and ultimately actually cultivating a local workforce. One area of great concern to our board and also to our bond oversight committee has been the transparency in our reporting regarding local participation. As you can see, we track every single worker. We know exactly who they are, what they're doing, what they're earning and what apprentice level they're at. 66% of our workforce is minority, 31% of them are apprentices and once again, these individuals have earned an average of $27.75 an hour. As we step back to our high schools, we believe that not only do we, you know, have to cultivate our adults into this industry, but also our young people, expose them to architecture, engineering and construction so they can go ahead and pursue such careers in their future. One of the programs that we developed last year was the IC program, which is I'm a Student Exploring Excellence and through this program, we enroll our students in college. They take a college course, which is college transferable credit. They learn their trade and then during the summer, they have a paid internship and many of our students are doing that right now. We have over 25 schools represented in this program and we're looking at 60% male, 40% female, which means these are non-traditional areas, disciplines for females and now we're getting a lot more of our young girls involved, which is a tremendous accomplishment. When you look at our course outline for these students, it's quite rigorous. Not only do they go to college on the weekends, but they also participate in industry seminars, which expose them to all the different disciplines and obviously they have their internships in the summer, which makes it all very worthwhile for them. One of the other areas that we're moving into is green training. Obviously, we have a whole new green economy that's coming before us and we need to cultivate our workforce so that they're prepared to take advantage of these new career opportunities. And the three areas where we're already focusing a lot of energy are photovoltaic technologies, which is basically solar power. And so we're looking at implementing those two programs for both adults and students. Wind technology, we already have a student program underway and environmental design, which is the college courses that our students will be taking next year. Obviously, with the building program that's $20 billion strong, as well as our sister agencies that have approximately another $50 billion just in this region alone, we are hosting the California Construction Expo on the 21st of August. Many of you have already received invitations to attend this event. We're focusing on green technologies, green building to basically prepare our workforce and also our contractors to enter this new area of opportunity. And I encourage everyone who's viewing this today to please log on to www-calconexpo.com and for those individuals wishing to start a career in construction, for them to actually come, they have free admission and they can actually begin their interaction with all the building trades, as well as the contractors who are there, as well as other training service providers. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I thank you so very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and then we have two other council members.
There's a number of people want to speak on, particularly Mr. Wezar, who has expertise in this. May I just ask one question? How does a small contractor go about contacting you about getting some work from the program?
They can contact our small business office directly and they can actually, I can give the number over the television wire here. It's 213-241-4973. They can call, find out when our next boot camp class is going to start, which is going to start in October, and we will walk them through all the elements of public contracting.
I appreciate that. It's interesting, I just completed a small remodel on my home and the contractor I had who normally runs two jobs at a time with six employees, small contractor, said this is the first time in 20 years he has no jobs on the horizon and all six of his employees are not working starting today. So the economy is very tough out there for these folks with the downturn in the housing market. There's nothing going on in the big contractors. There's nothing going on remodeling because people are struggling to keep their homes. It is a very tough market, so if we can focus people that are in that situation to LA Unified, which is one of the programs keeping our economy going here in LA, I would appreciate that much. Thank you very much. And with that, Mr. President, we can go ahead and do the Q.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Lavange and then Mr. Wezar.
Before I speak, please welcome a group of the Peninsula seniors, the Palace Verdi's. Please rise and be recognized by the City Council. Thank you all that are here today. Just how much does a student in any high school know about this right now?
We have 25 different high schools represented in the program right now. We actually outreach to every single high school and many of our students who want to participate, participate in the program.
And what is the hours of the regular school day? Do they just?
This is on weekends, so on college. They either take a class from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM or from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM and then on Sundays, they can take a class from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Where are the classes?
At LA Trade Tech.
At LA Trade Tech. Is that anything in the San Fernando Valley?
No, not at this point.
Could you do good something to the San Fernando Valley?
We can try to do that.
Because Trade Tech is a community college and Valley College is a community college. Mission is a community college. Pierce is a community college. If we really want to reach out, I think we should try to get it because transportation is difficult for anybody, whether it's public or personal. So could you look at, trying to duplicate some of this at Valley College, if not this semester, next semester?
Well, let me tell you, the Board Member Kornstein has addressed this concern by actually offering transportation to her students in the valley.
Right.
So that's how we eliminate that barrier to valley students is by them participating.
I understand that. I want some in the valley because I think it's important that they utilize the community colleges of their. Trade Tech is in the heart of the city on the south end of downtown. What I'm asking is, could you look, how long is this program funded for?
General fund money.
Excuse me?
General fund dollars.
For how long? Is it funded for one year, two years, five years?
We have a $20,000 budget for this program and every single year, we try to leverage our resources with other-
You have a $20,000?
Yes, a year for this program.
So this is not the only thing that doesn't cover your costs?
No, this is just the operating cost for this program. We spend about $10,000 a year just in transportation alone and, you know, transporting these kids to the different field sites that we go on and field trips. It's a tremendous cost, but we leverage our dollars with our partners, which is why we have a partnership with Trade Tech and they were the ones who actually did this as a pilot program.
Yeah, I'm just saying, Veronica, and I know your great work here and your work in the past is, this is a, almost a 500-square-mile city. It's tough for children and I went to school on Saturdays and got out of high school in two and a half years because there was a Saturday skills program. You know who Santiago Jackson is?
Oh, I know Santiago.
He was my teacher. Okay, okay. So I support these programs, but I just think it was easy for me because I live in Silver Lake and I took the Sunset Boulevard bus to 450 North Grand. I just think you have to try to regionalize Los Angeles to make it closer to the people. So all I ask is, in next year, consider having some partnership with the Community College District in the San Fernando Valley.
Oh, that's not a problem. I mean, we can look into it, but I just don't want to make a formal commitment to it.
Mr. Smith, I have a friendly motion to just ask that we support the program, but hopefully next year, look at, try to regionalize something in the San Fernando Valley, whether it's at Mission, whether it's at Valley College or Pierce College. Okay, all of the same things.
I think we just have a presentation today. I was informed by the clerk, so why don't we work on that in an informal basis because it would be out of order to do a kind of presentation.
Thank you, Veronica.
Okay, Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Soto, I want to congratulate you for the work you've been doing on this program and the other programs to encourage more small businesses to get involved in our school district program. As a former school board member and sometimes critic of the district, I see that this is one thing that's certainly working. We're not only building schools for, to relieve the severe overcrowding that we see in many of our campuses and it's a phenomenal job. Many people have not realized that this is one of the largest public works programs in the country and we not only move forward to provide students a better education and more opportunity, but we provided opportunity to local residents to participate in this construction through the We Build program. And when we see that a lot of folks, one of the biggest concerns on their mind, especially in this economy today, is job creation and finding jobs for people who need them, the We Build program has been doing them. When this program was created, you took this and just ran with it and we've had some phenomenal success. I know that here in the city of Los Angeles, the CRA is actually looking to do the same type of program that We Build has done and I hope that the CRA and other city officials contact you in the LAUSD so that they know what went right, what went wrong, so that we encourage local residents to get jobs in this massive school construction program. I also want to congratulate you on encouraging the small businesses to participate in this large construction program. When I was on the school board, as you know, I passed a motion to reach a goal of 25% small business attainment in this large construction program and we've superseded that 25% goal in a lot of areas and a lot of that was due particularly to a program that you were involved with, the Boot Camp, which you set up and were really excited about and I really appreciate your enthusiasm as that program got started because a lot of these small businesses in small neighborhoods, whether they owned a blueprint company or something associated with these large construction programs, it's not only the construction companies, all these little small companies in small neighborhoods who needed the help, the direction, the Boot Camp helped them fill out the forms, helped them familiarize themselves, how do they get involved in these large programs? And now I see them going on to other large construction projects throughout the city, not only at the school district. So you've done a lot to not only educate our children, but stimulate the economy. So thank you for all your work there. I think this has been a success. I would encourage you to go on and just like you did today, come out and talk about it because more people need to learn about this and particularly for those young people who do need a job, they should call you, call the school district. We'll put them in apprenticeship program, train them through our adult education programs, put them in a union that pays good wages and they're off working on these construction programs. So congratulations. I don't have any questions to ask, but I think this is a phenomenal thing that we've seen here in the city of Los Angeles and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. We have two public comment cards. Candido Mars is our first speaker and then Armando Herman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I apologize for any outbursts, but this is probably one of the best projects in the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Smith, thank you for this because the We Build program is actually doing what a lot of other programs say they're going to do and fail to do. They're reaching into the community, they're working with the school. LA Unified is doing an outstanding job with this. They can track, they can document everything that's happening, but again, a lot of kids cannot go on to college. But if I took you to the penitentiaries here in the state of California and you talked to a lot of these young kids who made mistakes, they're very talented and especially with their hands and they can come up with constant, they're good, hard workers and I think this is, for me, is a prevention intervention program. So thank you for making this very public and I just hope the public will support this and the small businesses will get behind this because this is the small business capital of the world. And again, thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Groll, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armando Herman. After that will be Zuma Dog.
Council members, good morning. It's interesting to hear today about this CRA and those other agencies that are involved, but this is about private interest, right? And if private interest is going to help the communities benefit, is going to help the taxpayers benefit, then we need to show more interest in the overall picture and not just the narrow-minded views of what one might think is best for the future. And so these resources that are granted to the CRA and how it's implemented out to the community, maybe we should think about using it for resources that have been maybe removed or possible theft. And I'd like you to hear this comment, the way resources go in the city of Los Angeles.
913-4728. Has returned.
Sir, we're discussing the LA, you can replay it again if it's germane, but we're listening to the Los Angeles Unified School District's We Build program and the workforce development of LAUSD, so if your comments could be part of that and this might be better for general public comment, okay? Sir? Okay. Sir, if you could please, could you respond to me whether or not this is about Los Angeles Unified School District's We Build program?
Why can't the people understand that if the schools need lighting, the schools need possible other resources that will enhance it and revitalize it, why can't I play this so the people can hear the problem of what goes around the school?
My only point, sir, is that this is today, right here on this item, and I've explained this a couple of times, but general public comment is for items of a general nature that are under the city's jurisdiction. Any of the individual items, for instance, a public hearing on a public event or on the LAUSD's workforce development program, has to be specifically on that. So that's, it's a pretty clear thing. We'd be happy if you want to have the tapes, but-
A part of the CRA, a part of all these other-
It's not, they're different agencies, sir, and I respect you on that, but CRA and LAUSD are different. So if you have no more comments on LAUSD, we'll close public comments from you on that item, okay? But if you'd like to pass that in, we'd be happy to take a look at it in a separate item. It's just out of order right now, okay? Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Yes, the city of Los Angeles, you've heard me call into radio relentlessly since the day I walked in here, especially the Mr. KABC Show, over the $20 billion construction budget of LAUSD. How many times have the people of Los Angeles heard me say, LAUSD, $20 billion construction budget? Well, here it is before us, ladies and gentlemen. So now it's time to remind you that the Inspector General admonished the school administration for front-end loaded management contracts. What that means is they say, we're going to build a project. Oh, you know what? We need more charter schools. That's right, let's build more charter schools and we'll use the $20 billion out of this, money out of that. Okay, then it's front-end loaded management contracts, which means consultants, 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 studies, surveys, everything except money into the classroom. Okay, so make sure who's ever overlooking this stuff, make sure that the money goes to the projects and not into the people that are creating these bamboozlements. Okay, also it says here, efforts to recruit individuals into the construction trade. Well, I'd like to say one way you can help recruit individuals is to help them graduate in the first place through vocations and also if you want to help entice people into the city for jobs, do not continue to increase trash collection fees. Do not continue to put taxes, bonds, all types of things on the ballot. Do not continue to make this city so unaffordable that nobody can afford to live here and then you have no solution. So this, you know, this is the biggest thing. Okay, I already spoke over the time I wanted. I want everybody at home watching to realize, the biggest thing in the city of Los Angeles is this $20 billion LAUSD budget. That's why Marito Nio's here, that's why he was backed. All the people in charge have to get their money on as much as possible. Look into this. ZumaTimes.com, more to come. People will end up in jail over this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dog, that'll close our public comment on there. We will note and file that presentation. Next item, please.
Item 6 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, I believe Mr. Cardenas wants to continue this, but after we hear the card from the public, Don Schultz, who has been very patient out in Van Nuys, is our next speaker. Mr. Schultz, good morning.
He left.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Vogler, appreciate that. So we will go ahead and include that and close the public hearing. And Mr. Cardenas, you'd like to continue that one day? Is that right, number 6? Mr. Cardenas, you want to continue that one day?
Yes.
Okay, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item 8 was called special by Councilmember Lavange.
Okay, Mr. Lavange, item number 8 is before us and after, I'm sorry, we'll recognize Mr. Lavange.
Members, I just want to bring your attention, this is a small opportunity to help teachers parking next to an old 100-year-old school in the Silver Lake District. There will be outreach with the community, but we're trying to get more parking by conversion of an alley to a street. Ask for an I vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 23 called special by Councilmember Lavange.
Okay, I think, Mr. Lavange, you have 23 next. After that, we'll go to 25, Mr. Rosendahl. Item number 23, Mr. Lavange? We have 23 next.
Members, I again, I wanted to make a point here, in the Coingah Pass, believe it or not, there's no sidewalks, no sidewalks, you can't walk from the basin through the Coingah Pass to the San Fernando Valley. This is called in on the Bureau of Engineering to do a detailed report so we could walk safely. We missed the opportunity with the conversion of the old rail line that went through there and then also when the Hollywood Freeway was built. And it's surprising to see that one area of the city is not served as well as it should be, but we're going to fight for it, for the walkway, sidewalk and a bikeway. Thank you very much. I vote.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item 25.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could Michelle come on up? Thank you. Colleagues, as you know, the world of bicycles is really coming to the United States of America America like it has never done before, first of all, a lot of people have been sport biking for years, Marvin Browdy, the one whose shoes I try to fill, created the Venice Bike Path, which is one of the most phenomenal bike paths in the world along the ocean, in the last period of time, people have said, I'm going to take a bicycle to go to work, and I'm going to take the bicycle to go to the supermarket, and I'm going to take the bicycle to go visit friends, I'm not just a sports type, I'm doing it because this is my way of my health, and it's also my way of saving the toxicity issues of all the gases that come out of the cars, now, with the price of gas going through the roof, there are people from an economic standpoint that are riding their bikes, but we Americans have never really appreciated the bicycle and the automobile being on the same street, being in the same neighborhood, being on the same block, in fact, most of us who drive the car don't realize that a person who rides a bike has right, the right to be actually in the lane like a car would be, and not off to the right, pushed off by some driver, most recently, we've had a huge issue in Mandeville Canyon, that I brought the whole community together to discuss where do we go from here, there are many things we need to do, but I put in a motion, as my colleagues know, about Bicycle Bill of Rights, rights for the people who ride a bicycle, and for us all, pedestrians, motorists, and bicyclists, to find a way to get together and do what Europeans do, do what the Chinese do, do what a lot of people on the earth do, is work together with the bicyclists and the automobile person, so Michelle, we've been looking at, and Mr. Lavange has been a great leader on this, and so has all the colleagues here, about a bike system that would be for bikes throughout the city, so first, I'd like your update on where we are on all of that, and then I'd like you to comment about the Bicyclist Bill of Rights.
Well, you may want to invite my colleague, Jordan Turner.
Oh, please, sure.
From City Planning, City Planning's lead.
Great, great.
I'm Michelle Mallory, I'm the city's bicycle coordinator, I work with the Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Jordan Turner, Department of City Planning.
Hi, George, good morning.
Jordan.
As for our bike update, we've received draft policies from our consultant, and we're
going through those, and we will have a draft plan to present to the public in the fall, and we will have outreach meetings throughout the city to receive input from constituents of the city.
Yeah, and that's very important to constituents in the city, because I know people who ride a bike who can tell you more about a street than I'll ever know, because I've not been the bike guy, I've been in my car, I have a friend named Ryan who goes all the way from West LA over to Burbank every day, to work and back, he can tell you a million things, so that outreach with the community, the people in the bicycling world, is as critical as it gets to helping us work the plan, so what's your timetable when we'll have some sense of where we're going?
We actually, the consultant has developed a draft policy, they're in the field evaluating the old plan and determining what we can do from the old plan and hold over into the new plan, and the new plan will actually look at a network of collector bikeways, so smaller streets, quieter, less cars, slower speeds, and we're going to actually hook those up with the arterials to make this work, we actually hope we'll have a document before you next June for adoption.
Next June?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to comment?
Yeah, the goal is really to have a final adopted plan by next June, and that will include another round of public hearings, public workshops, and public comments, we should have a draft policy document by this winter, we are currently working on implementation programs, one of them include having a Bill of Rights, as you mentioned, and many other education-related items.
Let me finish my speech, Charles. No, no, the Commissioner, Public Works Commission. Paula Daniels and Mike Bonn and my Chief of Staff, and Captain Eaton from the LAPD, bicycled up Mandeville Canyon in a reaction response, you were there too, right?
Yes.
Now, when you went up the canyon, you obviously saw that moving to the right at some times was problematic and could be dangerous for the bicyclists, or you also could see that the automobile person could also have a problem, and of course, the residents could have a problem, when you went up there and came down, you all took notes on stuff.
Correct.
Can we do things with Mandeville Canyon that will make it safer for the bicyclists, make it safer for the pedestrian, and make it safer for the automobile person?
The first thing we need to do, and that's what we were out there doing with Commissioner Daniels, is to look at improvements to the roadway, and we're talking about general surface conditions, there are some bad sections of roadway, certainly need pothole repair and resurfacing, it looks like there's some encroachment into the public right-of-way with the landscaping and whatnot, and a lot of that could be corrected and allowed, to allow bicyclists to move over in some areas, that said, in some sections, the travel lanes reduced to about nine feet, so there aren't areas for a bicyclist and a car to share that, even if the roadway was glass smooth.
And Ben, I'm looking forward to specific support there in Mandeville Canyon that can make it safer for everybody, I know you're all working on it, but that brings up my next issue, which is Bicyclist Bill of Rights, would you reflect a little bit on what we submitted here, and we're going to have a process in the fall to continue on it, and I hope we'll have legislation approved by my colleagues and I, and signed by the mayor, that gives some comfort to bicyclists, that they don't have to take the hazards of the road to the point that they do now today, every bicyclist I talk to tells me they've been in an accident, at least once, and if not once, more than once, and you know, when you're on a bike and you get hit, you're in trouble.
Well, maybe I've been lucky, because the only time I've crushed in very recent history was on Councilmember Lavange's community ride last year, but besides that, I've been relatively safe on the city streets.
Well, that's Tommy, you know, he's doing a good job.
Nonetheless...
We hope it wasn't Councilmember Lavange that you collided with, no?
None the less, what we really need, and I think what the Bicyclist Bill of Rights
is trying to get at, is empathy from drivers, we need folks to take a little bit more time in their cars and be considerate of bicyclists using the roads, we, I, you know, one of the things I try to explain is that we do have a great system in LA for bicycles, unfortunately, it's full of cars, and we need cars to give bicyclists a little bit of a break, if it takes a second, or two, or five seconds to let that bicyclist pass, that's important, and I try to tell folks to remember, that could be your mother, your sister, your brother, your dad out there on that bike, and again, have a little bit of empathy when they see a bicyclist on the roadway.
Yeah, we have to get rid of this culture of cars as the only way to be around, right?
We need to have choices, we need to have cars that can be used, we need to have good transit, we need to have bicycles as a part of the system, so it's about having options and be able to integrate all of them together.
Yeah, well, I just want to thank the three of you for working on it, and I'm looking forward to Mr. Lavange, and the leadership of all my colleagues as well, Wendy Gruel and so on, and Eric Garcetti, Greg Smith, the whole group here, you know, Jan Perry, the whole group of 15, we care so much about the safety of the bicyclists and the rights of the bicyclists, as well as the culture of the car, and hopefully, a year from now, people will defer to a bicyclist at times, rather than the poor bicyclist have to pull to the side or they're going to get nailed by somebody.
Hope so.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Rosendahl asked some of the questions, interests, we do have in here that for the department to report back in 30 days, because we've been working on this for a long time, and I'm not sure, I'm not willing to accept June as the time period, I think we can do a lot more in that, in that time period, and so we've asked the department, as you see, to come back on a status report in 30 days to the Transportation Committee, because we want to hold the feet to the fire, there's some transportation-related things, but there's also, excuse me, planning, but really, we've been talking about this bicycle plan for how long?
It's been a number of years, we've been pretty excited about planning's participation up to this point, we have a different culture in the city now than we did a few years ago, and we're merely moving, and I think the consultant's doing good work, we're going to have a good plan for you.
Okay, so I want, when it comes back in 30 days, I want to look at ways in which we can shave off some of that time, because I think the public has been waiting for this for many years, and we found the other day that there was actually some approved bicycle lanes in my district that had never, for whatever reason, been painted during that period of time, and so there is, I think, as you've mentioned, a greater interest, attention, and focus on the issue of bicyclists, and for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is gas prices, not the least of which is the importance of having some form of public transportation and not sitting in traffic, so we need to encourage that and not wait a long period of time, and so I look forward to that report back in the 30 days as to ways in which we can expedite that, because I think the public would say we've waited long enough, thank you very much, President.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange.
Yeah, thank you very much, staff, have anything you want to add right there? You grab the mic.
I just wanted, as a council, to perhaps clarify the direction to the planning department with regards to the existing code section that pertains to requiring bicycle parking in buildings that are in commercial or manufacturing zones, and the current requirement is 2% for buildings 10,000 square feet or over, so are we talking about increasing that requirement, or just us, are you asking us to just evaluate what's currently in the books and what kind of improvement?
I think it'd be better to evaluate that right now, you know, on that issue, if there's any recommendation, I'd certainly be open to that, the one thing I wanted to ask in members, as we do this and go forward, how much, how difficult, how difficult is trying to balance all your pressures right now, somewhat difficult?
Very.
Okay, good, so the question is, the question, I just want to get that on the table, do we try to ask you or direct you to do regionally, meaning, I'd rather have you do a first-rate proposal in the central area of Los Angeles, in the south area of Los Angeles, in the west area of Los Angeles, in the valley, east and west, somewhat regional to what your planning, area planning commissions are, but still connected, so that you don't feel overburdened, we're never going to get over the mountain unless we take the first step towards climbing it, and this is the first step, we are behind, but we will catch up, but I think you should look at zones, look at density, where there are more people, I did count, I think, 17 people the other morning between Silver Lake and downtown, riding commuters on bicycles, I do know the schools, we used to ride our bikes to schools, we don't anymore for other reasons, do we bring that back, will there be a movement this year with young people that we don't know about, let's ride our bikes to school, we used to have a bike, schools don't even have it anymore, but I think that should be encouraged and looked at in some way, but I just don't want you to feel overwhelmed, but if you do the regional approach, what you connect with other cities, I think is so key, and the other question I want to ask you, if a bicyclist is riding down Main Street, or riding on Main Street, past this building, should they be going in this street on the wrong way?
They, by law, bicyclists must travel with the flow of traffic.
Right, so is there any, do we know statistically what information on citations?
We don't, we did, LADOT did a officer training program a few years ago with LAPD, and we know there's been a renew of that, that essentially encapsulated the bicycling laws for LAPD to increase participation by the law enforcement with the cycling community to...
There's the LAPD liaison officer right there, Sergeant Edo, I think if I have it correctly, Detective Sergeant, maybe you could just meet with him to give you a name at LAPD, so you could get this information now, because more people are riding, we have asked the Fire Department to statistically check when they go out to a call, when bicycles are involved, you know, so we start getting statistical information that will help us do it, I spent a day in Portland with a great person for the City of Portland, riding bicycles all over, and seeing what they have done to transform it, but there's a density, and I don't think it's, that's a factor that helps, but we need bike racks, we need to get, anybody here from the MTA today? You're from the MTA, you jumped up there so quick, she's from the MTA, all right, good, I think we need more bike racks at every subway station, and furthermore, Mr. Rosendahl, whether it's the green line, blue line, gold line, red line, whatever line you call it, there should be a bike station at every subway station, so Avak, I want a motion for that, thank you so much, thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I just want to get a clarification, in terms of our bike plan and the routes that we're planning for, where are we with that, when will we decide the routes for the bike plan?
The consultant at this time is evaluating the old plan to determine what's still feasible within the old plan, they're also looking at arterials and collectors, the smaller streets, to determine whether or not we can develop a network out of the smaller streets, and those are what'll go on the map, they've been evaluating the collector routes using aerial photographs and whatnot, and they'll be doing the field work to go out and do that, so when we bring you a draft plan, when we bring a draft plan to the public in the winter, we'll have a map of designated routes as well as the policy information.
Got it, and, for example, two weeks ago, I had a town hall where I presented to the community in Bull Heights possible routes, and the community was really excited about these possible routes, what do they need to do to be involved and advocate for those routes?
Well, there are a couple ways to get involved, we've had, as mentioned by my colleagues, we've had the first round of public meetings, there are opportunities to mail us postcards, there are opportunities to get on the web and provide additional comments, but it's crucial that we get that now, I do want to be very clear and realistic, that to be able to get a bike lane in, a very standard bike lane, we need 10 feet of roadway width, five feet one direction, five feet the other way, so if we're going to be able to do that, we have to be able to make choices, that said, as we look at collector network, we're looking at smaller streets that will retain the same curb-to-curb width and configuration for cars, but will make it a bike priority street through a number of other measures, so we're at a point in Los Angeles where we can't just build more in, we need to have some give and take and make some decisions about where we're going to have priorities, and if some of the streets are going to be bike priorities, we'll need the support of your office to be able to do that.
Great, thank you very much, finally, my last question is, funding to implement takes resources, right now, we ask our stretched-out Department of Transportation to do something, and dollars are very limited, how do we envision implementing this plan?
We're going to need...
Financially, that is.
We're going to need help, you're absolutely right, primarily, at this point, we primarily use Metro's call for projects, the federal T-money for the big bike path projects, we use local money to stripe in bike lanes, I expect we'll be able to use some local money to be able to build these bicycle boulevards and this collector network we're also talking about, you should know, we're short three positions in the bikeways group right now that are frozen, and this is a bikeways group that was dealing with what we were dealing with 15 years ago on bicycles, if you want us to go further and be able to do more, we're going to need more, there's absolutely no question.
But lack of available funding is not an issue, you're going to set your plan as if, hey, this is what we'd like to see, you're not going to be restrained by funding at this point, worry about that later?
The plan is funded, and we will be able to develop a plan for you, but as you want us to put elements of the plan on the ground, we're going to need financial help at that point.
Okay, and will we be, as local council members, able to use some of our discretionary funding for some of those that we would say, hey, this is not in the plan, but it meets the criteria, we do believe it should be part of it, we could, because I'm ready to move forward with the two possible paths in my district, but I'm kind of waiting for this plan to come out to see how we all link up, and I would want to find the funding available, even if, hopefully, you find the funding for me, but...
We can use your discretionary money to be able to do some of that, we need to be able, whatever you're thinking about, we need to get that in the plan now, we want to be able to work within the plan, because it's going to be a huge amount of work, you know, the city is massive, and your district aside, we'll need to be able to work with the 15 districts to be able to link them and make them all work, because where your boundary ends, somebody else's boundary begins, and we may have those all hook up, so, the money aside, and we will need resources to be able to do that, we want to get all the elements that people want in the plan now, so if you're looking at routes now, we need to get those in.
Great, thank you, and unfortunately, as council members, we are trained to think by district, it's just the reality of this place, but I think for this, we have to think regionally, and what's best for the whole region, and how we link up amongst different areas.
I know Ellen had a comment.
Yeah, just one comment on the planning side, in addition to the bike plan, we are also working with the community planners to have them designate or propose bikeways or bike routes within the community plans, so this is also another avenue for you to direct the work of the department by having those routes considered by the community planner of Bull Heights.
Great, my final point, the Gold Line for the MTA rail line to the east side of Los Angeles is opening up 2009, as you move forward with this plan, I'm sure you're thinking about how to make those linkages and with bike racks and everything else that's needed for the Gold Line to allow easier access for bikes.
Metro did do a study two years ago that looked at the station locations and made a number of recommendations, and we're looking at those in the plan.
Great, thank you.
And the planning is also working on the transit-oriented development of districts around the stations to incorporate bikeways and bike racks and all the appropriate facilities to encourage more bicycle.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, and with that, let's go ahead and take a vote, and please open up the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you all, and thank you for your good work, appreciate it, next item, please.
Item 27 was called special by Councilmembers Rosendahl and Lavange.
Okay, Mr. Lavange, on item number 27. On the extra-capacity containers.
Yeah, can I have the staff sit at the table? And just for the record, if you could identify yourselves, and just basically tell us what we have before us.
Good morning, Alex Halub, Assistant Director for the Bureau of Sanitation, there is a CAO report about the extra capacity that was directed by the council to go back and charge residents who have unregistered containers, for the Bureau to go back, identify those, and basically start charging them, and what the Bureau has done followed the council recommendations, we have identified 77,000 residents... We have identified seventy-seven thousand residents who had extra-capacity containers, according to our.
Five hundred and seventy-seven, huh?
No, I'm sorry, seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand, we have extra cans we're not paying for.
We're paying for them. We, the Bureau sent letters out, and we got about ten thousand who called back the Bureau of Sanitation, and from the amount that called back, about six percent have agreed to pay the extra capacity. The remaining have asked to be, the containers either removed from their premises, they were turning it back to the city, and another portion went, basically disputed that they have the container in their property.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. From the ten thousand, the six percent basically agreed to pay the fee. The remaining basically told us to come in and pick up the containers, they do not wish to pay the extra charge, whether it's five dollars for black or two fifty for the green. However, there is about sixty-six.
And you could have as many blue as you want.
As long as you can show that you can, you are recycling, yes, you can have multiple blue, councilman. Sixty-six thousand who did not respond, we have direct, asked the Department of Water and Power to start charging them for the extra capacity that is in their possession and available to our.
Sixty-six thousand?
Yes.
People are gonna get a notice, they're gonna get charged more.
That's correct.
Because they didn't respond at all.
Exactly.
Now, has someone looked at those sixty-six thousand locations?
We did not look at the entire to re-verify, but a lot of that data came in from our systematic replacement program. This is some of the recent data. For the last three years, the Bureau of Sanitation been going out and replacing black and green containers. And as we are replacing the containers, we are recording the information down, and this sixty-six thousand are part of that information.
Is it by zip code? Could you look, if you put a map of the city out there on that desk, could you say where there's a higher intensity of multiple cans? Or is it citywide?
Basically, it's spread throughout the city. The problem is not like in one area.
If you could hold my time when I ask the questions, I'm down to ten seconds.
I don't have a map with me, but we can tell you which, it basically spread throughout the city.
Could you tell me on the forty-five-hundred block of Los Feliz Boulevard, between Vermont and Western, how many extra-capacity cans? Right now, if I ask the President and City Council to excuse me for this meeting, and we walked over to the computer in the Board of Public Works?
We can, actually, we would love to do that, because we do have, we can tell you how much they paid last month, how much they paid six months ago, and how much they paid over a year ago, whether they paid for extra capacity or not. We, last month, we were able to upgrade our database system, and now we can tell what containers each residence have. The one who went through the systematic replacement program, that's about eighty percent of the city so far. We can tell how many blue they have, how many green, how many black, what the serial numbers, what repairs were done on those.
So, you feel confident we're doing the right thing? That we are, we are prepared to do, we are, we are requiring people to pay for something that we know that they should pay for. There's no mistake, maybe a few, there's sixty-six thousand people are gonna get an extra bill, but of those sixty-six, they are do that bill because there is extra capacity. We're not guessing here. I just want to make sure that you feel confident, just like your drivers feel confident every day when they leave their yards, that they're gonna do a good job for the city of Los Angeles.
And from the sixty-six thousand.
Answer my question, I want to hear the confidence.
The sixty-six thousand, we're confident, we, they got the first letter, and they had the chance to dispute it. So, we, we have instructed D W P to start charging them. If they claim that we do not have the containers, or the container was stolen by my neighbor or somebody else, we will take the name off the extra capacity. But we're confident when we recorded the data, because it's through our database system as well as our PDAs, which we have been recording the information for the last year.
I just don't, you know, I mean, a lot is happening to people, they're being brought up. I don't know if I pushed my time again, Mr. Garcetti, I'll sit down, is anybody?
You have six minutes as the opener, so you still have another two minutes left, but Mr. Alacone, Mr. Rosenthal.
So, to just take that, just to say, I just want to make sure we're doing it right. I want to make sure we're doing it right. I just don't want to just throw it on the people. This is new to them. It goes back where we've tried to improve the system, we're recycling more, it's positive. I just want the confidence, and then I want a person they could call if they feel they've been done wrong, so they can adjudicate it and resolve it. Who is that person?
Well, we have our hotline, which is one eight-hundred-seven-seven-three-city, or they can call three-one-one. Either way, once they call in, we fill up a dispute form, and we basically, we will not be charging them if they don't have an extra capacity. We do have limited staff when we go out and check to verify that the people, you know, do not have the extra capacity, but we don't really have enough staff to cover.
Is any of this done in the divisions where the trucks come out of, or is it all done from the warehouses where the, where the cans are? Does North Central know in the Hollywood Hills who has extra cans?
The database is basically centralized downtown. The information comes in from our systematic replacement program. These are the programs that they go out and replace the containers that reach their end-of-life cycle. So, they record for the black, the green, as well as the blue, what they have, the serial numbers. So, if the North Central wants to know, they can just call our hotline staff, and they can tell them whether the residents have, is paying for extra capacity, or is not paying for extra capacity, and whether our records show he has an extra capacity or not.
Members, I just want to say, there's sixty-six thousand people who we represent out there who are gonna get a notice from the city, who may be justified in that notice. I just want to make sure they're justified in the notice, and then if they're not, I'm gonna make sure that someone is attentive to their needs to resolve it. Because we are almost like a train that's left the station, and we're in motion. Every week, we're collecting the trash, every week, we're doing this, then all of a sudden, they get stung with a five-dollar charge, which doesn't seem like much, but to someone, that's, that could be a challenge. So, because you say it's citywide, it's not just all in my district, it's not just all on other parts of the city, it's everywhere. So, everyone may be reacting to this. So, we better be listening to make sure that we represent the people well and resolve the issues.
Even if there is a dispute, councilman, we do go back and we correct the dispute, even after six months from it happening.
All right. But let's say if you charged, if they didn't have it, how fast do you refund it?
Basically, we do it right away with D W P. We can just put the credit back to that account.
Can we put the credit back?
Excuse me, Mr. Labange.
So, that's what we'll do it, so they don't have to file a claim with the city clerk or city.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacone is our next speaker, and then Mr. Rosenthal.
Just wanted all to be aware of this. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that of the, of the letters that went out, sixty-six thousand did not respond, and those are the ones that are being processed by D W P for payment.
That's correct.
And of the, of the ten thousand or so that did respond, six percent said they wanted to continue, and the others said they didn't.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so the, the calculation of the eight-point-five million dollars from the C L A and C A O is based on the sixty-six thousand?
Charles Marukhuk, the C L A's office, that calculation was actually based on the seventy-seven thousand amount, which was the amount that they sent out to mailers too. I believe the adjusted number would be around seven and a half for the sixty-six that did not respond.
Okay, I can barely hear you.
The number calculated in the C L A C A O report was based on the seventy-seven thousand number of addresses that was provided by the Bureau of Sanitation, not the sixty-six thousand.
So, you just assumed that all of them were gonna pay the fee?
Our report says that there's a potential revenue stream of up to that amount, but we were not comfortable making the assumption of a rate at which people would pay the fee until we had some response from the residents.
Okay. Now, the seventy-seven thousand includes people that were paying different levels of fees and different amounts?
That's correct.
But, but that's all included in the analysis?
I'm sorry, the seventy-seven thousand has, they've not been paying any fees.
I'm, I'm sorry, but, but they were receiving different kinds of cans, and, and the different, but all that was calculated. So, you've separated those who just have the two fifty for an extra-capacity green versus the five-dollar extra-capacity black?
Yes, we did.
So, you did it on the basis of the uncollected, the cans that are out there that are not being collected for, the bins that are not being collected for, not on the seventy-seven thousand?
That's correct. We have seventy-seven thousand broken down into this.
But the eight-point-five million represents a hundred percent return?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay. Because we had initially calculated eleven million, and I'm wondering where the shortfall is. Is that because we haven't started collecting?
On the.
At what point would we start the collection?
When the residents have the amount included on their bills.
No, but when, in your, in your calculation of eight-point-five million, your assumption was that this fee will be collectible July first, or September thirtieth, or?
It's an assumption of an annual fee collected from any, any month to the next month in the following year.
So, the eight-point-five million would have to be reduced again by the number of months that we failed to collect this year?
For this fiscal year, that would be correct.
And so, when is the department gonna collect?
The department has sent a letter to the Department of Water and Power to start.
When, I, I know, I know, I know, I know all that stuff. I just want to know, when do you expect to receive the money?
Probably by October.
October, so we're losing three months?
Well, D W P needs six weeks to enter the, inform the sixty-six thousand to the database and start charging the residents. So, as soon as they can put them to the database, start charging, the Bureau will start getting the money. But let's say they go out in September, councilman, people will wait about a month or so before they pay, and that's when the.
I think it's more like the council directed you in May, and you waited two months to get your act together. Because, so we lost about a million dollars in revenue in that time.
We send letters out on.
I know you sent the letters out, and then you held it, because you wanted to send another letter out, and it wasn't until you were directed by a council committee to send the, forget the second letter, just start collecting, that you did that. But on your own initiative, just like you, you for, for eight years failed to collect this money, you delayed the process arbitrarily just because you wanted to send another notice. And I'm telling you that, that quit stalling, go get the money. This is not a time for us to be, be increasing the bureaucracy, when, when this, this money was, was due, and let's remember, the purpose was to incentivize recycling. So, so your actions have, have caused a slowdown in, in creating the culture of people who are trying to recycle their goods.
Thank you, Ms. Alacone.
That's really the, the negative impact of this. The money is secondary to that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal. After that is Ms. Gruel.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, the bigger issue, there are several issues. Yesterday, we had a budget committee meeting, and unfortunately, the community was generating, thinking there was money, and they were fighting over money. It was a sad moment in that sense, because people's energy is very important, and I, I'm a big believer in animal services and their staff, but somehow it got tied into this moment, which was unfortunate for all of us. Just want you to know how I felt about that. Putting that aside for a minute, you've heard my colleagues talk about where we are on this, sixty-six, especially Mr. Labange about notifying the people. Are we gonna notify everybody, and they'll understand that they have that and they have to pay extra for it?
Councilman, we did send, when the letter went out, we did send it to the seventy-seven thousand, and we wanted to give them enough time to respond, and then started charging.
Sure.
And so, we updated our database with the, with the responses that came back. Right now, with the sixty-six thousand, we did not send the second letter. We went ahead and we instructed D W P to start charging. They told us need about six weeks, so that puts us in September, before the bills start going out to the residents. And so, we probably won't, let's see the money till sometime in October.
Sure. Now, those sixty-six thousand who didn't respond, I mean, I get a lot of, quote, junk mail myself, and I don't know what's junk and what isn't, and half the times, I can make a mistake too. Is there a chance to give them a real letter that says, dear Mr. Rosenthal, you have this, that, and the other, and we're gonna be charging you this in the near future, warmest regards? I mean, are we gonna do something like that to notify the sixty-six thousand that?
The Energy and Environment Committee actually instructed us not to do, but to go ahead and proceed with, with the charges. But if the council would like to, we, we do not mind sending a second letter, but we already have instructed D W P to start the process of inputting the information.
Do you think, I, I, I mean, I don't want to stop the cash flow, I want the cash flow, but I don't want to beat up on my constituents, frankly, who pay a lot of taxes, who might not even know, you know, it's the summer, for crying out loud, people are all over the world, and this and that, and, and I just want to be able to be appreciative of the constituent. I mean, that's all I'm.
We can definitely do that without impacting the process.
Without impacting the process.
And we, also, we can tell them that, you know, if they see a dispute, we will be more than happy to correct the mistake if we have on our side.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion on that and get a second to send out this letter? And it won't slow down the process, but to let the sixty-six thousand people know that they might not have known, that they do have an extra bin, or they have an extra this? Do you have a second for that? No, they're not. They did one, and now they're gonna start charging them, which they're gonna, I don't mind them charging them, but I'd like to let, let them know again. Do you think that would help? The sixty-six thousand?
Probably would be more clarification. I don't know how many of those sixty-six would read it, if we get, again, you know, very little, but again, through the, the process that we have, councilman, we'd be more than happy to credit people if, if, if we have mistakes on our side. We do it all, all, all the time.
A question, because I remember we started the program, you used to put stickers on the can, you know, and use that extra can, extra-capacity call, can, call three-one-one. That way, there's a cost to mailing everything that is pretty high, right? But we get it out there, they see it on the can, then they call if they have a question, or they find out on it. And we could probably get the conservation corps, and I'd like to see a zip code of where the sixty-six thousand are. Thank you for your time, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, I don't mind you interrupt me. What about my eleventh district, or some of those sixty-six thousand in my district, or these are my people?
I'm sure some of them are.
Okay. Could I get a breakout on that, so maybe I can find an informal way of communicating to my constituents? My constituents pay a lot of taxes, and they deserve the respect, and they might not have known about this, and I'd like to figure out an angle. Maybe I'll do an email blast to all my folks, if I can get them in my database.
By the way, also, we do leave a sticker, the extra capacity, when we see it out in the field, and has a red marking on it that tells them that this, we have a sample that we can pass around. It tells them that if you, you know, they have thirty days to call in, and if not, then we will be charging them.
Okay.
So, we do have those stickers that you put on the container, and you cannot really open the container unless you remove the sticker.
Yeah, Mr. Smith was saying it should be bright red. It needs to be something that catches their attention. Okay. I was gonna ask you a lot of more questions about what goes in the green bin, what goes in the black bin, and what goes in the blue bin, but I'll save it for another moment. I know we have this that is, is going out now to everybody, but I'm sometimes personally confused too. If I have a soiled piece of plastic, you know, do I put it in the black bin, or do I put it in the blue bin?
You wash it, put it in the blue bin.
If you don't wash it?
If it's slightly soiled, the, the recycling do allow us to put a little bit of soiled plastic into it, because the, the technology, the technology has changed so much over the last few years, that it allow for some of the contamination to be accepted. Actually, around City Hall, we have placed a lot of the blue containers, and you can see some of the stickers that are on them, so you can tell what to put inside the blue. And our goal, we had actually, uh, downtown City Hall, we have it up in the valley, we're gonna have it in San Pedro, and we're gonna spread it throughout entire city of Los Angeles, to have blue container next to a trash bin, and we'll be dropping about 30 more in the valley, pretty, in the next few weeks.
Okay, let me just ask you this, if I had my peanut butter, um, you know, glass, and I couldn't clean it outright, would I put that in the black bin, or in the blue bin?
And Mr. Rosendahl, we're a little over time, so.
Anyhow, I, I wanna know more about what goes in these bins at a later date, because a lot of people unconsciously, or subconsciously, or don't know, and they put things in the wrong bins, okay? I look forward to more on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, and then, uh, Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, was there a second to that motion?
I've not heard one yet. Okay. Ms. Gruel. Uh, we'll hold, uh, we'll go to Mr. Parks, and we'll come back to Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just would, uh, you know, one of the things, just from the report, and I think it articulates it, one of the issues that the Budget and Finance Committee wants to do is get a reading on what the potential revenue source is by early, mid-September, so we'll know how real the money is. And, and as far as Mr. Rosenthal's, uh, uh, motion is for is a letter, what I'd recommend is that we send the bill, and then people will react to the bill, and either sending the money in, or saying, "Come get the can", and then we don't slow the process down, because there are some issues here that, uh, the, uh, revenue sources that we talked about yesterday, that we may be 10 or 12 million dollars short in the budget, uh, we may have another hole basically dealing with revenue from, uh, sale of city property, so any revenue that's forthcoming as quickly as comes into the budget is gonna be a benefit, so I would recommend that we send it out, we clarify, and not go out with the, the bill from the, uh, DWP, that it's a separate bill, that they get it, they respond to it, that first one, then we'll know how many people want the can, how many people will pay for the can, then from there on, it should go on the DWP bill, and then it's a normal process. And again, I think this, this ordinance is, what, 10 years old, at least? Somewhere down the line, we didn't enforce the very ordinance that, uh, was approved by the City Council, or else we wouldn't be in this situation today, we'd be collecting this for the last several years, uh, and so I think we need to correct it, but not add more paperwork, or more systems in place, and then that way, the, the bill serves the notice of, same, the same purpose as a notice, and then people can make a decision, particularly if it's clear as to what their options are.
Thank you, um, Ms., okay, okay, Mr. Alakon?
When you deliver these cans, does it not, not have a big red sticker on it that says, "This is an extra capacity can"?
No, uh, when we did, if we have an extra capacity can that's being delivered, we do charge for it right away.
Doesn't the can have a big red sticker on it, saying, "This is an extra capacity can"?
It does not have a big sticker, it has the labels on it, uh, recycling, green, or black, it's on the top of the lid, and the bottom of the lid.
I'm advised the can has a sticker saying that it's extra capacity, and you will be billed for it.
Not.
Is that not correct?
We have, we do, when we drop somebody, an extra capa, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The question is very simple, when they take the can, doesn't it have a sticker on it that says, "It's extra capacity, and you will be billed for it"?
No, we do not.
You do not? Okay, then I am ill-advised, I have, I've been told by, uh, by a sanitation official that that in fact is the case.
Not to my knowledge, I was out.
There are extra capacity tags that are issued for one-time, uh, trash pickup, those are, uh, purchased by customers on an as-needed basis, uh, I'm not sure if that's what.
No, but there is no tag that tells them. I'm getting at the point of notification, that, uh, when they receive the can, they're not notified again that this is an extra capacity? They're not?
No, the extra capacity tag is different, uh, I don't know if that's what they were referring.
Okay, if I find one of these tags, I'll, I'll give you a call, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Okay, with that, we have the proposal that's before us, hope we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 33, called Special For Cards From The Public.
Okay, and Mr. Alakon, would you like to say something at the outset?
Members, uh, the, uh, my wife owns a house in the area under question on item number 33, um, I don't believe that, uh, that it's required, that I recuse myself, because we have a prenuptial agreement that separates that property from my property, um, but, uh, out of, uh, out of, uh, just to be very safe on the issue of, of any perceived conflict of interest, I'm recusing myself on this matter, so I'll be stepping out, and I wanna be deleted from the vote, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alakon. Uh, Mr. Smith?
If I could ask number 21, go forthwith?
Uh, yeah, everything will be forthwith today, yep. Um, our first speaker, we'll go to speakers from the public, uh, on the side, and we have about 12 speakers, so you guys can either relax at the table, or, or on the side. Uh, Elektra Kruger is our first speaker, after that is, I believe it's William Lloyd Hitt.
Very good morning, and welcome to council.
Good morning. Okay, my name is Elektra Kruger, I'm the current president of the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association, and the association does, uh, support, totally support, the proposed historical preservation overlay zone for the Stonehurst community. The Stonehurst community, which lies at the west end of Shadow Hills, carries with it an unequalled combination of distinctive architectural styles of, uh, of many of its homes, along with a unique cultural history. Most of the homes were constructed in the 1920s of alluvial rock and stone that was collected from the nearby Tohanga Wash flood plain, hauled in by dropped off, drop-bottom wagons, and, right now, we are very fast losing those very unique homes, um, to modern architectural styling, to structural enlargement that's utilizing more updated, though not necessarily more aesthetically pleasing, cultural, uh, um, structural materials, and the establishment of a historic preservation, uh, zone is critical to saving a tangible link to a unique past, uh, in the northeast San Fernando Valley, to the preservation of a craftsmanship, a construction technique, a culture, and a time, and a place that has no rival, rival, and should not be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Lloyd Hitt, after that will be, uh, Bill Icke.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. My name is Lloyd Hitt, I'm the president of the Little Landers Historical Society. It's exciting to be just standing here today, this morning, it's been over five years of work on the Stonehurst HPOZ, which I consider one of the most important things the community has undertaken, undertaken to date. Because of the overwhelming support of the City Council, the Cultural Heritage Commission, the Planning Department, and the Planning Commission, we are here today to say thank you for all your past support. Our thanks to the community also, who after voting for an HPOZ, funded the HPOZ themselves, and with the help of Al Knight, William Malouf, Susanna Wood, Mary Benson, and others in the neighborhood, researched and collected the data for our consultants, Jones and Stokes, who put this whole HPOZ together. I encourage the council to support the community by voting yesterday to a HPOZ project funded and researched by the community. This neighborhood is a one-of-a-kind with tract homes built in the mid-'20s of River Rock. These stone cottages with craftsmen's interiors were built by and under the supervision of Don Montalaco, a Native American, and to my knowledge, there is no other neighborhood like the Stonehurst Village in the city of LA. It really needs to be preserved, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Bill Icke is our next speaker, after that is Susanna Wood.
Yes, I'll be very short, my name is Bill Icke, and I'm the chairman for the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association, we, um, unequivocally support this project, and would, uh, and appreciate the leadership of, uh, Councilmember Gruel in, uh, helping this come to fruition, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Icke. Susanna Wood is next, after that is Albert, um, Knoppler.
Good morning, City Council members, my name is Susanna Wood, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors, who are in favor of the proposed Stonehurst HPOZ. In 1923, Pep Remp had a vision of a utopia in the northeast San Fernando Valley, that vision included using river rocks from the area to build a community. To realize this dream, he enlisted the services of master craftsman Daniel Montalongo. This collaboration resulted in our present-day utopia, the area designated for the Stonehurst HPOZ. The beauty and strength of our neighborhood is in its diversity, we have a strong sense of community because of this diversity, rather than in spite of it. We share a small-town civic pride within this unique rural setting. It may seem odd to believe that architecture could be at the core of a neighborhood, but we love our stone homes. These rare gems afford us a sense of pride, continuity, and history. The proof of that is in the first section of the booklets we passed out at the beginning of your session. That is, that is a, a petition signed by 70% of the designated area. In addition, additional proof is offered in the fact that we paid for our own survey to begin the process for the HPOZ. It is our understanding that no other HPOZ community has ever done this. You see, council members, we are already saving you money. As you know, property values increase in designated historic districts, so our HPOZ will continue to be a jewel in the crown of the city of Los Angeles. We understand that we are, that we have a few neighbors who are unable to attend the meetings and classes set up by the city. In order to keep them informed, we created a blog site with links to the city's historic preservation sites. We posted notices in the hub of our community, our local mini-mart, and the feed store.
Thank you, if I can ask you to conclude, we, we have a two-minute clock to keep things fair for all speakers, thank you.
We thank you for your time and your consideration, and we hope that you support us.
Thank you so much, appreciate your understanding. Our next speaker is Albert, uh, is it Knoppler? Hope I got that right?
Albert Knight, as in shining armor, not, not the knight in the middle of.
Oh, Knight, I'm sorry.
Um, I, uh, my name's Albert Knight, I'm a department associate in anthropology at the Santa Barbara Natural History Museum, and amongst my other architectural, uh, archaeological interests, the architecture of the early stone houses of, uh, not just the city of Los Angeles, but all across the San Gabriel foothills. Um, I wanna take my few moments here to thank Wendy and Mr. Cardenas, and especially Dale Thrush, who has literally given hundreds of hours, and attended dozens of meetings, et cetera, et cetera, um, Robert, Emily, and all the other people from the city of LA that have helped in this, we're very, very grateful. I'd also like to take one second and change the subject, and thank Councilmembers Zine and Smith, I see you're flying service flags, and I wanna thank your family members for their service to our country. I made one mistake when I passed the petition around, I forgot to ask four homeowners to sign the petition, four of the lots are owned by the city of Los Angeles, so I would like the mayor, the, uh, councilman that was, uh, conducting the meeting, Wendy, or anyone from the city of Los Angeles to please cast your four votes by signing the petition today, and/or casting a vote in favor of the historic district, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Drenton, after that is Phil Tabby Jr.
Good morning, or maybe afternoon by now. Um, seems we have come to this point from a bifurcated thinking process, as to what has driven the need and want for an HPOZ, whether it's protecting the stone houses, or there was a point in time where there was fear of eminent domain and mansionization. If that were to be the case, then what's in front of us isn't the tool, as is clearly stated in the city's own documentation. Either way, there are deficiencies in how we have gotten to where we are. A notification didn't go out in Spanish, yet there's a large contingency of individuals living in these homes that are Hispanic. We found wrong address issues. The first public hearing was rained out, for all practical purposes, and the second, the attendance was predominantly by those who were advocates, and basically third-party, or many of which are third parties, and don't actually have a financial interest in the property. The reason I can feel comfortable saying that to you is, in 60 days after the April 24th notice, 36% of the actual property owners have signed documentation that say they don't want this. There's even a larger contingency that says, "Something else needs to be considered", so saying that there's overwhelming support isn't really where we're at, and we don't believe that there is overwhelming support. The structure of the HPOZ also has some issues, it's fragmented, there's a street here, a half a street there, go over a couple streets, you might pick up some more houses than a smidgen around the corner. That being said, what we need is full consideration of the process, cause many of these are 680-foot square homes, how are these people gonna build them out? Families can't live in these, they can't go build backwards, because they're on septic, and the letter, the rhetoric is, they don't want them to go up. So, frankly, in conclusion, we've skipped over this process going to Plumb. I think it's imperative that this process is not taken today, and put back to the Plumb Committee for full and complete consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Phil Tabby, uh, Jr. is next, after that will be John Luciano.
Hello, good afternoon, my name's Phil Tabby Jr. Um, I'd like to express my concern against the historic preservation overlay zone. My family and many of my surrounding neighbors are completely against the HPOZ vote that City Council is considering today, besides the fact that the homeowners who will be ultimately impacted by this vote, many of whom have lived here for many years, including myself. It is upsetting that many of us were not even informed of today's vote. Those who are informed are organizations such as Chapoah, Shadow Hills Property Owners Association, Little Landers, and the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council, whose members do not even own a home in the proposed historical preservation overlay zone. In addition, after contacting Wendy Gruel's office just yesterday, after finding out about today's vote, I was informed, after City Council passes today's vote, the HPOZ agenda item, the rules governing the homeowners will then be decided. My family has lived in the area for over 30 years, and enjoys the fact that it isn't governed by an association that collects fees, and decides how our homes should conform to others around it. It is unfortunate that homeowners who are going to be affected would not give a fair opportunity to express their opposition, so I would like you to please consider to maybe change the agenda, and, and vote on this another day, so we can get more of us in here to, to, to voice our opinions. Um, I, I'm looking out for my family, I'm looking out for my, my, my children, and everybody else that's, that's living in this area, I've lived there 29 years, every, you know, and, and it's just not right that, that, that they can come in and not even live in our area, and tell us what to do. Give us a chance to voice our opinion, because none of us were informed, they said there was a blog spot out, we don't go on the computer much, we, we, we didn't know about this vote at all, and, and I'm here representing my father, who can't even be here today because of family court he had to take a friend to, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Luciano, or Luciano, and after that is Jim Ecker.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is John Luciano, and I live in the Stonehouse, uh, Stonehurst neighborhood. Um, my basic opinion of this, uh, HPOZ is, I moved into a neighborhood, I did not wanna be governed by any statutes or any limitations of what I can and what I cannot do. The property that I purchased, I've already brought it up to what the code requires, and what is necessary to be done on that, in my neighborhood, to bring it up to the looks, but I'm totally against this HPOZ, and I would like for you guys to give us a little more time, that we can get all the neighborhoods, all our neighbors, to come, come across, and get us a united family, we can come in and be against this whole policy, because we should have our own rights to what we wanna do on our own property, not be governed by anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, um, Jim Ecker, after that is Andrea Ecker.
Howdy, folks, how you doing? I'm just gonna make it kinda short and sweet, because I, uh, I'm not a public speaker, and I'm not used to anything here like this, although I do work in the public, uh, a little bit, but anyways, I'm, I wanna tell you, I'm against this whole thing, because of the way it's kinda got a secret hidden agenda between the few people, uh, on the certain different councils, and the people that made the HPOZ up. It's a, kind of a un-American, uh, way they're doing about doing this thing, and, uh, they're gonna change all the laws and everything after they already make the zone, so I, uh, I just feel like, uh, the people that weren't notified to, you know, hold a voice, and, and the people that actually live there, on, in our property ownership, should be allowed to, uh, say what they feel, and, uh, it goes a, a lot farther than that, but it goes pretty deep. I've, uh, picked out a lot of things, I, and I don't have enough time to go into it, but I wanna, I'd like to just say, make this a, a extra special thing today, and put it off to the side for just a little bit more time, and, uh, make sure everybody that has a say gets a chance to vote their opinion, and, thanks a lot for listening to me, and, uh.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ecker, appreciate your comments. Uh, Andrea Ecker is our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a 32-year homeowner, I own one of the stone houses, which you want to make an HPOZ, and I am totally against it. Number one, the property owners were not given notification, proper notification, those who did end up at a February meeting did not have time or the understanding of the HO, HPOZ in order to object to it. By the time the neighborhood wanted to object to it, we had a meeting which Mr. Thrush was at, and he advised us that it was too late, that we could not object, because we weren't at a February meeting or something. So, anyway, um, the neighborhood really does not want this, there are a few people who spoke for the HPOZ, none of which live in our neighborhood, except for the last vote, maybe, there were a few, but they don't live there, they don't have a say, we have the say, and we want the vote, so please, I beg you to either postpone this, or vote no, because the people do not want it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last speaker is Mary Benson.
What? Like, no.
I'm sorry, I'm just dealing with the cards I have, if there's other cards, we'll ask your representative and others to see, it may have happened, those are the, but Mary Benson is our next speaker.
Hello, council members, my name is Mary Benson, I'm here representing the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council, uh, early in- Early in spring of 2007, the Neighborhood Council voted unanimously to support the HPOZ. What I'd like to ask you to do here is to listen to the nature of the opposition. The opposition is, I love my neighborhood, I don't want it changed in any way, shape, or form. I don't want any organization or implementation of city rules to come in and change my neighborhood. I like it the way it is, I want it to stay the way it is. The problem is that the people that are voting in opposition, and I've talked to several of them, are not aware of the pressures on development that can turn the lot next to them into a McMansion, that can prevent a developer from going in with a general plan amendment and putting in a small-lot subdivision. They're not aware of the pressures in this very desirable community and desirable area. I can get to City Hall, and I do live in the Sun Valley, within the 500-foot zone, not within the area, but I can get here in 15 minutes if there's no traffic. It's very accessible to downtown in a desirable area. What the residents in opposition are not aware of are the pressures that will change their neighborhood, and this is just the implementation of a zone, not a preservation plan or rules that will make their wonderful neighborhood an unlivable place. We encourage that all of them participate in the preservation plan and in making up the rules so that they can have a say in how this HPOZ will be established. Voting against it means that they would not preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like we had a couple other speakers, if you'd like to come forward, sir, and we'll get your card, come over, and we can speak to us now. You just state your name and we'll collect your card right after.
Sir, my name is Christian Aguirre. I own a stone house within the proposed HPOZ area. We have circulated petitions, many petitions, by the majority of the owners asking to not do the HPOZ. See all of these? These people have a say, they are American citizens. They're saying no. We've all said no. We have the majority. Please do not do this to us. We do not want this. Wendy, please help us.
If you'd like to hand anything in, we'd be happy to take that from the sergeant-at-arms. Thank you. Is there any other speakers? Ma'am, did you want to come forward as well? You just state your name and...
My name is Grace Forrest, and I live on Sheldon Street in Sun Valley, right in the heart of this area. And the reason why I'm against it is because I don't have a choice. I'm going to be told that if this zone goes through, I'm going to have to be paying fees, like CCNR fees type thing. I'm on social security, I have a small pension, and I couldn't afford to go into a CCNR. Now, my neighbor down the street has a rock house, and they want to go historical? Fine, but I don't want it. And I would just like to have the choice of being to say, no, I don't want my rock house to go historical. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forrest. If you'd just be sure to fill out a speaker card, and with that, we'll start with Ms. Grill.
Ms. President, if I could have the Planning Department come forward as well and to make a presentation. Colleagues, this particular HPOZ has been worked on for about six years. And The Los Angeles Times did an article a few years ago about the 10 best neighborhoods you'd never heard of. And in fact, the Stonehurst area of Shadow Hills was one of those neighborhoods. It's an equestrian community, and it has a wonderful collection of stone houses that were built in the mid-1920s. Just last week, I believe, the Cultural Heritage Commission recommended one of the stone houses for historic monument status. This HPOZ did not arise in the usual way. The people of Stonehurst actually made it happen. Several years ago, a former Stonehurst resident named Albert Knight wrote a personal history of the area, and part of his work was used for the study required for the city's HPOZ procedures. Then there was more work that was required. The community actually raised the money to do that, and they did a lot of the legwork necessary for the study. And it was done in partnership with Lloyd Hitt and the Historical Little Landers Society. This HPOZ, Mr. Cardenas and I were just talking about the fact that this is only the second one in the valley, and the stone houses there are ones that are historic. And it won't take away or restrict the property owners from making appropriate changes to their community. Now, you've heard some of the concerns from the residents, and I hope that in your presentation you will make a couple of points about notification and how that was done. Does the HPOZ area conform to city standards? And are fees charged at all? I mean, because that's not something at all that we are aware of. And also about the horsekeeping rights, the importance of encouraging that horsekeeping rights there. I may have additional questions, although my timer hasn't been on, so I guess I get lots of time there for that. So you could hold my time, and if you could answer those questions and make a brief presentation.
Since basically everyone's made the presentation I was going to make, I'd rather go into the PowerPoint by my staff rather than me reiterating what's already been said, take a picture, it's a million words.
What it looks like.
Why don't we go through that, and then I'll answer your questions.
Okay.
If the city clerk can direct the audio individual to turn on the screen.
We have him on.
It's not on the screen yet.
It's on our, fortunately not up there.
We're going to switch them up there, don't we?
It is on the, our camera's right next to us, on our...
There we go.
I think it's afternoon. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Emily.
Hold on one second. You can stay on the first one, we just didn't have it up. Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Emily Leskis, Planning Assistant with the Planning Department. I'd just like to take you through a brief presentation of what we have and how we've gotten to this point. Next slide, please. Okay, so just to go through the timeline, this project was initiated by a council motion entered by Wendy Grill instructing the Department of City Planning to initiate proceedings on establishing an HPOZ for the Stonehurst community area. From March 2006 to August 2007, a historic resources survey was conducted as a private partnership between the Little Landers Historical Society and Jones &amp; Stokes, the consultant. The Planning Department noticed the public of two workshops we were having in the community in January and February, and a public hearing that we were having also in February. We noticed everybody within the proposed HPOZ boundaries and within 500 feet of the boundaries. We then went to the Cultural Heritage Commission in March, and the City Planning Commission in April, and both commissions recommended approval to the next step. Next slide, please. The period of significance for the historic resources survey is between 1915 and 1930. Dan Montalongo was the local artisan builder and stonemason who constructed and designed a majority of the structures in the neighborhood. The historic resources survey made the finding that the Stonehurst neighborhood meets the criteria for HPOZ designation because of its unique architectural and aesthetic character demonstrated through the extensive use of native river rock for a majority of the structures and their related features. Next slide, please. The proposed HPOZ is roughly bounded by Sheldon Street to the north, Stonehurst Avenue to the east, Wick Street to the south, and Dronefield Avenue to the west. The survey area consisted of 90 structures on approximately 92 parcels containing mostly single-family residential structures. And the categories of the structures are contributing, contributing altered, and non-contributing, and now I'd just like to show you a couple examples. This is an example of a contributing 1 structure, and it adds to the historic qualities or historic association for which the property is significant. As you can see in this example, all the stone is intact, they've maintained an open porch, and they've restored the columns and wood windows. In the next example, this is a contributing 2 structure. The structure was built in 1915, and it represents the oldest house in the neighborhood. The next example is a contributing altered structure 1. In this example, you can see that alterations have been made to the structure. They've boxed in the rafters, and the columns have been brought out. So there have been minor alterations to the structure. In the next example, there's a little bit more major alterations. The porch has been enclosed, and it's being used as living space. So the four categories of contributing will all be just lumped into one contributing category. The non-contributing designation was given to structures that do not appear to meet any of the HPOZ criteria. It may either have been built before the period of significance, lack integrity, or is incompatible with respect to the scale and massing and the materials used. So this is an example of an enclosed porch and major changes made to the facade of the structure. Overall, we have 62 contributing structures and 28 non-contributing, for a total of 90 structures. And just to conclude with the last slide, we have a visual of the scattering of the contributing elements and the non-contributing, and then the vacant lots that run through the center. So with that, we'll turn to answering any questions.
Thank you, Emily. I'd just like to speak about the concern with the notice. The notice was sent out to every property owner in the area and a 500-foot radius. The concern about it not being in Spanish and just in English, honestly, I cannot recall, but typically, we put at least a little disclaimer in our notices that if you need a Spanish translator at our meetings, we can provide it. At the two workshops, we did have at least two Spanish-speaking individuals there and at the public hearing. Key to this and the public information and the outreach was that we held those workshops in the community across the street from many of these homes. Given the first day, yes, it definitely rained a lot. But we still had some people come out. We had a follow-up workshop, same location, and we had a better turnout, yes. Our public hearing was held in the Van Nuys office, and we still had a turnout. So as far as public awareness, we tried what we could in order to reach the community. Throughout the process, we did have strong support, and that's what I can say as far as the public outreach goes. Other concerns such as CCNRs and those items, I'm going to turn over to Ken Bernstein to address.
Good afternoon. Ken Bernstein with the Office of Historic Resources in the City Planning Department. To address a few of the other points that had been raised. First of all, this proposed HPOZ does meet the city standards for adoption, as Emily's presentation indicated. This is one of the most unique neighborhoods in the San Fernando Valley. It had a high percentage of contributing structures. The city HPOZ ordinance does not have a set threshold of the percentage of contributing structures, but with more than 2/3 of the homes in this neighborhood contributing to the significance of the HPOZ, that is a very significant threshold and above, in fact, some of the other HPOZs that we've had adopted in the city. With respect to fees, the only fees, there are no CCNR or association fees associated with the adoption of an HPOZ. The only fee associated with the program is for the Certificate of Appropriateness applications, which are made for the most substantial projects associated with demolition, major alteration, or substantial additions. The vast majority of projects in our HPOZs, in fact, in most HPOZs, over 90% of the projects do not go through that certificate of appropriateness procedure. And for those reviews by the city, there would be no fee associated with that work. And the fee associated with certificate of appropriateness applications is currently in the range of about $330. Finally, the preservation plan that was mentioned is an opportunity, through our HPOZ ordinance, there's an opportunity to tailor the citywide HPOZ procedures to the preferences and conditions in each local neighborhood through the preparation of a preservation plan. And if the HPOZ is adopted by the council today, staff in community planning in the valley office, and also involving our Office of Historic Resources, will begin working with the Stonehurst community to tailor the HPOZ procedures to the preferences in the community. Gives the community, if the opportunity, for example, to exempt certain types of work from review altogether, to create a much more streamlined process. So if there's a consensus in the neighborhood to create greater flexibility in certain ways, that can get written into the preservation plan and govern the HPOZ procedures going forward. I'm happy to answer any further questions.
And I would just also like to add, piggybacking off the preservation plan, the review process, once established, there is an HPOZ board. Those board members are residents of that area. There's five members, one selected by the mayor, one by the council office, two by the Cultural Heritage Commission, and then the fifth by the board members themselves. So the review of these projects is done internally. The development of the preservation plan is done by the residents internally. So the residents do have a heavy say on how it's administered.
And my other question had been as far as horsekeeping rights. Those won't change, is that correct, Mr.?
We do not change any of the horsekeeping rights that you have now. Whatever is in place in the code right now, it still applies. We are not adding anything to that.
Because there was something that went out that suggested that horsekeeping would not be protected and in fact would negatively impact, and that is not true.
No.
As far as, and there's also not a fee associated with being in an HPOZ. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And colleagues, we did hear from people who are concerned about the implementation of an HPOZ, but I think, as you mentioned, Ken, the opportunity to design, as it goes forward, to address some of the concerns raised by neighbors as to its implementation and how that will impact them. But this is a desirable area, one in which these are beautiful stone houses and do have that historical significance. We do have, and I'm not sure the signatures this gentleman may have as well, and welcome them. We also have signatures that were collected with specific addresses from the people who have stone houses in that area as well. And although this is not unanimous, as you see here from some of the opposition in all of the hearings, and colleagues, I do want to say, this has been discussed since, you know, 2003 and talked about in the neighborhood. It's not a new concept that came up just recently. It was something that really was driven by the neighborhood and the community, and they convinced me that this was a process we should go forward with. And so I look forward to the implementation aspect of that as well to ensure that some of the concerns raised by those neighbors would be addressed and asked for an eye vote today.
Okay. Any other councilmembers who wish to be heard on this? If not, we have this item before us. Madam Clerk, if you please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you. We'll go, we have a request from Mr. Alarcon to move on item 78 next, without objection. We'll go ahead and take up 78. We have cards from the public on this, which we'll start with. And we'll begin with Tara Slavin. After Tara Slavin will be Christian Aguirre. Thank you for your patience, and very good afternoon to you.
Hello, my name is Tara Slavin, and I'm the lead domestic violence attorney at the L.A. Gay and Lesbian Center, and I'm also a member of the L.A. City Domestic Violence Task Force. On behalf of our clients and agency, we wholeheartedly support this motion and its effect to create the LGBTDV Subcommittee of the L.A. City Domestic Violence Task Force. Same-gender domestic violence occurs with the same frequency and severity as it does within the heterosexual community, affecting approximately 1 out of 3 people. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender batterers subject their survivors and partner to physical, emotional, sexual, and economic abuse ranging from manipulation to murder. Yet the issue of LGBTDV remains surprisingly invisible, and there remain surprisingly few resources for an issue that affects more than 1/3 of the over-half a million LGBT people living in and around Los Angeles. Whether it's the client who is repeatedly attacked, and when the police arrive, they do nothing, until the one day he defends himself and then gets arrested, or when the police arrive and they say, if you want to press charges, I'm going to arrest you both. At the L.A. Gay and Lesbian Center, we see countless clients who receive either inadequate and in some cases inappropriate responses from law enforcement, and it remains one of the largest barriers today facing the community. Recently, an advocate from another organization told me that when an officer said, when he shows up and sees 2 women, he just walks away because he doesn't know how to handle the situation. And law enforcement is not alone. Barriers exist at all levels where homophobia, biphobia, and transphobia exist. In my work at the center, I see the end result of this lack of awareness and resources, which includes increased abuse, injury, lethality risk, with the ultimate consequence that may be murder. I'd like to just, again, express our support, and we look forward to working with you on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Tantow? Ten? Sorry, you can pronounce it for me, so...
Tantow.
Tantow, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Tantow, the chair of the city's Domestic Violence Task Force. The task force is composed of volunteers appointed by each council district, along with representatives from the city departments, including LAPD and the city attorney's office. We welcome Councilmember Alarcon's suggestion that we established an LGBT committee under the task force, and have already spoken to that point to the Public Safety Committee. In fact, we formally established that committee at our July meeting. And that committee does include representatives from both LAPD and the city attorney's office. include representatives from both LAPD and the city attorney's office. Most council members have taken the time to assure that they are, that they have appointed a representative for the task force, a couple of not. I would ask that council members who have not done so, please take the time to be sure that you are represented on this task force. It is a wonderful working group of volunteers, and we, and it is our job to provide support and information to the city council on issues regarding domestic violence. Again, we do support this motion.
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Alarcon, and I believe Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Richard Alarcon for your leadership on this. This is really good, it's really great. It's true, as an openly gay man, I can tell you that the police are somewhat skittish and not knowing exactly what to do. And some of them do bring with it the prejudices and homophobia that exists in society. This is a wonderful step in the right direction. I know that the LAPD will support this, I know that Chief Bratton will support this, and I know a lot of leadership within the Police Commission will also support this. Carol Tantau is my representative to the Domestic Violence Task Force, and I first want to thank you, Carol, for your leadership over the years on dealing with domestic violence issues. You've been fantastic. What we're doing today, colleagues, is saying for the first time within this domestic violence issue that gays and lesbians, just like, you know, bisexual and transgender, just like heterosexuals, when they have relationships, have issues. And to hear that a third of the relationships are domestic violence is large, and it is shocking. I can personally tell you stories of some of my brothers and sisters who have had these issues, and the police have responded inappropriately. What this gives us is a process and a sense of safety, that within the committee of domestic violence, there is a Subcommittee dealing with us and our issues and our relationships. This committee, this commission-type committee, will sensitize the police, it will give those who are in domestic violence issues the opportunity, when they dial 911, to realize that when that police officer from the LAPD comes in, that officer will understand this issue. In fact, I urge Chief Bratton to have a module in the training program at the academy on homosexual issues and to discuss this one in particular. I think what we're going to learn from this, colleagues, is the data and the understanding, and we'll have a chance to refine it and build on it, so that gays and lesbians, transgender, and bisexual individuals have the same rights of domestic violence issues that heterosexuals take for granted. This is a wonderful day here at the city council. This is actually a historic day. It's in keeping with the same history we did with Gay Pride the other day, and acknowledged gay weddings, and acknowledged basic human rights and civil rights of gays and lesbians, transgender, and bisexuals. This is a civil rights issue, and it's a human rights issue, and thank you, Richard, for your leadership on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon.
Members, you know, we, as a council, applauded the actions of the Supreme Court to recognize LGBT marriages and give them that right. At the same time, domestic relationships have problems, as Mr. Rosendahl articulated. This item came to me, first, I recall, as a senator, somebody had mentioned to me that we had to do something about the unequal treatment of victims of domestic violence in the LGBT community. And it wasn't a desire to treat them differently as much as no understanding and/or limited policies with regard to that. Also, it could be hidden a lot easier because of the preconceived notions about what domestic violence is. When you say domestic violence, the first thing you think of is a heterosexual couple that, a male on female dominance. And so you don't think of elder abuse necessarily, but we know that that is a form of domestic violence. You don't think of teenager abuse, and yet we know that that is a form of domestic violence that we are learning more about each day. And when I came back to the city council, I was interviewing a candidate for the Human Relations Commission, a nominee from the mayor, Francisco Dueñas. And so the first thing I want to do is thank Francisco for reminding me about this issue and asking me to do something about it. So thank you very much, Francisco. This is here because you mentioned it to me when we went in that interview. And that is that we can probably do a better job of handling these circumstances. It is not, it is not, we cannot assume that the LAPD's policies, existing policies on this subject, and they do have them, are necessarily the best, are penetrating in terms of the community and the understanding. One of the issues that concerns me is, does the LGBT community know that they can specifically tell the officer that this is, that this is my domestic partner, this is my partner, as opposed to just saying, "We got in a fight," and being handled completely differently? Half the resolution to domestic violence comes from the victim recognizing that they were a victim of domestic violence. If they don't tell the officer specifically, there's no reason to believe necessarily that the officer will recognize this as a domestic violence situation. And so one of the issues is of the Subcommittee to focus on this issue, the Domestic Violence Task Force Subcommittee, is to not just to engage the LAPD to improve our policies and procedures relative to handling these cases, but also to engage the LGBT community in how to fully inform the community on how to fight for their rights as victims in the categories of domestic violence. So, so this, you know, we are celebrating, I think, those of us who agree and concur with the Supreme Court's decision recently, we celebrate the ascendancy to normalcy with regard to the right to get married in the state of California. At the same time, we recognize that domestic relationships are challenges, and there's no reason why the LGBT community should not be subject to issues of domestic violence just as other communities. And so it is my pleasure, it was my pleasure to introduce this motion. I know that you will embrace this. It will be an improvement, I think, for the, to assist the LAPD in improving their policies and procedures. More importantly, it will empower victims to take control where they have no control against their batterer. And that's, that's, that's a right that we should protect, no matter who it is. And so, so I thank you in advance because I anticipate your eye votes, but I also wanted to take the time to inform you about this issue because each of us has a responsibility as a council member to ensure that those we represent in our communities who are of the LGBT community have the full protection that they deserve as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alarcon, and thank you so much for introducing this, and I was proud to second it and to sign a letter of support, not only because I'm the liaison on the council for the Domestic Violence Task Force, but I especially want to thank the DV Task Force for all the work they've done. I think each year, we broaden the reach and the depth of our work on this issue, and that is so critical because violence is violence is violence. And we have a double burden we're addressing here today. We have the discrimination within the LGBT community and the stigma of being abused that exists in society across all groups, but also then we have the discrimination within the past domestic violence work of the exclusion of people sometimes saying this can't happen with same-gendered couples. We know that it does, we see that, we talk to our police officers, and in many of our districts, we get calls all the time for our police officers to roll out to domestic violence, which is same-gender domestic violence. This is critical because we can not only look at the quality of life for the individuals that this affects, but there's also been a real silence within the LGBT community for too long, and this will help us address that so that this cycle does not become perpetuated. As we know, there are some folks who have been in multiple relationships, who have been the survivors of domestic violence, and the work of this Subcommittee of the Task Force will be absolutely critical. So thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and thank you to this council for recognizing that domestic violence, it looks just like everybody in this room. It affects every single one of us, our families, some of us as individuals, it affects every community, it affects every part of the city, and until we end that violence, we can't be truly a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
I just want to stand and thank everyone who's involved. There's nothing like a city hall that opens its doors to people who have needs, whatever their needs may be. And there's nothing worse in one's life when they have trauma, trauma to domestic violence. So I think I want to thank Mr. Alarcon first, and also you thank the man who brought it to you, which is so important, to listen to people as we represent him. So onward and upward, I call for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 36, called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
There are cards on that matter as well.
And a public hearing is required?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to hear the public comments card first?
Take the public comments first, so that we get straightened out.
Mr. Zumadog? Mr. Zumadog? Armando Herman?
Yes, regarding this DCA program, in the past, there's a history of it, it's abuse. So all I'm going to keep it short and to the point is, let's have some execution of agreement when it comes to their policy, that they stick by it and by the guidelines. Let's make sure that this trust fund is appropriately used for its exclusive funding and purpose, and more so for accountability. So let's keep this in favor for those that apply it and use it appropriately, and whether or not it'll be implemented correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zumadog?
Yes, the city of Los Angeles and the United States of America will be asking for a no vote on this. Just so people understand, poof, I'm out of breath, excuse me, but just so people understand, we're going to give $1.6 million for a book fair in Guadalajara, Mexico. Now, they say that this is federal money provided for this type of thing, and gee, we need to build this expensive pavilion in Guadalajara because it will help get business for the writers that will be promoted. That is not the federal government money's job, it's not city council's job to provide an opportunity in Mexico for writers to be able to show their things. How about we take this federal money from U.S. taxpayers and have a book fair in the United States of America? We certainly need resources for the schools, and I don't think that there's a U.S. citizen that wants this money, federal money, to go here. What happened? What happened?
Two minutes is up?
Oh, my God.
Oh, one minute, you had one minute left? I'm sorry, you had one minute left.
Yeah, two minutes, I got there, I planned everything on the two minutes, even if you can just cut that through. Do you like to agree with the last thing you said? So let me just say, I can briefly say one sentence.
One sentence.
The mayor and the city council is going to take $1.6 million of federal money for a book fair in Guadalajara, Mexico, while we have people not getting the services they need in the.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ogulgarai, our general manager, cultural affairs, to give us a brief overview on this. This is a National Endowment of the Arts grant. Over the years, we have received grants from the National Endowment of the Arts, a federal program that takes place throughout the country. We were in a competitive process with other cities. They recognize Los Angeles, and its artists has to take advantage of this opportunity to reach out. And we'll all tell you, members, whether, see, I'd like to see more money spent in every part of Los Angeles for the arts. This is a defined grant by the federal government, asking cities to participate for exchange of artists in other parts of the world. This happened to be Guadalajara, Mexico. Ms. Garai?
Hi. Yes, I just wanted to verify the fact that this grant was given specifically for the city of Los Angeles to send arts organizations, visual arts exhibitions, dance companies, theater ensembles, photography exhibitions, visual arts exhibitions, movies to Guadalajara to the International Book Fair, which is the largest Spanish book fair in the whole world, as the guest of honor in 2009. Typically, Guadalajara International Book Fair chooses a country as its guest of honor, and this is the first time in its history that they've chosen a city to give that huge honor to, and it's Los Angeles. And so the federal government is giving us money not to support the fair, but to actually make it possible for our department to give grants to Los Angeles-based arts organizations to represent this fair city during the book fair. So grants will be given to, for example, it'll all be competitively based, peer-reviewed, but we're looking at things like exhibitions of architectural drawings and photographs of Los Angeles, or the L.A. Philharmonic going down to present a concert. They're all going to be also encouraged to look at the multidisciplinary and the multicultural nature that is Los Angeles. So we're very eager to have hula companies and other demonstrations of our multicultural community be front and center of this unique opportunity. And I have to say that Mr. Labange is right, that had we not competed successfully, you know, this grant would be given to the county because the county is in a, in a position to execute this grant as well as we are. So I encourage you to vote in its favor and do so today because we have to have a signed cooperative agreement no later than September 9th, or we risk losing this wonderful and prestigious opportunity for us to be represented in a book fair that is, that is visited by over half a million people.
Thank you very much. Also, on federal grants, they do have an audit, right? This is not just that they send you the money, you have to fill out forms.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And I want to just reemphasize that the bulk of the money is going to be going to arts organizations in Los Angeles to represent the city in Guadalajara.
Will it go to artists who, let's say, don't live in Los Angeles but live in Los Angeles County, or is it?
The NEA wants this to be inclusive, so it might be Los Angeles County artists as well, but that's something, you know, this is really more a contract than a grant. It's like the NEA is saying, "We're making this money available to you, but we have restrictions on it. You need to spend it in this manner." This money cannot be spent to buy books for libraries, it cannot be spent to do after-school classes.
It's encouraged by the National Endowment of the Arts to get artists around the world. This happens very close to us, so the cost will be as great as it is.
Absolutely. And I have to say that we've been very fortunate in the last few months of getting a number of NEA grants, and if we don't accept this, I think our credibility is going to be rather shaken with that agency, and it's, it's the country's leading agency promoting the arts.
But, members, I think there's been a little bit of a talk that there was this city money, this is a National Endowment of the Arts grant specifically for the task of doing this, of artists from Los Angeles County.
To promote Los Angeles.
To promote the arts in this very famous book fair. I ask for an eye vote, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. What if we're short of the money? It's $1.6 million of federal money. What if we run short? Where's the money going to come from?
We're not running short. We're, we're doing this through grants and RFPs, so there's no way that we're going to allocate more money than we have available.
I have no problem with the arts. The concern that I have is there are so many priorities that this city has, that this country has economically, and to spend $1.6 million on this particular project troubles me. I know that in the San Fernando Valley, we have Pierce College, we have Symphony Winds, and they want to travel with culture, and they have to go out and do bake sales and spaghetti and try and raise dollars that way. So I've got a real concern about taking $1.6 million, which is a tremendous amount of money, to send to another country, and I believe in exchange. Pardon me?
The money's not going to another, the money's going to the city of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs. It's not being sent to another country.
No, but we are paying for the people.
The money is coming to us.
Okay, and then what do we do with the $1.6 million?
We're doing a grants program that will provide grants to Los Angeles-based arts organizations that includes media, literature... That includes media, literature, design, visual arts, performing arts. They're City of Los Angeles-based organizations. The money is coming into the DCA to be given to institutions and organizations based in Los Angeles.
And then what happens with that money? Does that pay for the trip to Guadalajara?
They get honoraria, they get their, yes, they get their trip paid for through the fund. It could be not even a trip. It could be a visual arts exhibition from LACMA goes to a museum of fine arts in Guadalajara. It's a very common practice for museums to travel exhibitions abroad. So this is very much in keeping with the kind of funding support that is given by the National Endowment for the Arts. And I have to say, National Endowment for the Arts was created to promote the arts in the United States. That's their mission. They're not going to use that money. If we reject that money, they'll just give it to the county to do the very same thing. They're not going to give it to somebody else to do, you know, shelters for animals or for, the NEA's mission is to promote the arts.
No, I understand that, but what about arts here in the city? What about arts here in the county? What about arts here in the states? What about arts on the East Coast versus the West Coast? What about arts here in our own community?
We're trying to raise monies as aggressively as we can. This is, you know, there's another item on your agenda, which was passed on consent, which is another grant from the NEA that we got for, to celebrate the legacy of Charles Mingus. We're going to celebrate Mingus. As a matter of fact, one of the programs is at the Madrid Theater. As you know, Charles Mingus was a son of Watts, and he's one of the most revered jazz artists in the whole world. Well, we're going to use federal money, again, to do a nine-month celebration that will bring the big band, the Charles Mingus Band, to the Madrid Theater and to the--
Here in the city, in the San Fernando Valley. So the money will come here--
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we're trying to bring as much money into the coffers of the DCA on behalf of the arts in the City of Los Angeles. This is an extraordinary opportunity for us to trumpet the wonderful work that's taking place here. We're also avidly working with LA Inc. to make this an opportunity to build cultural tourism, which, as you well know, that increases tourist tax dollars, so that increases, you know, the revenue for both the city and our department and LA Inc. So we're, you know, just using any methodology available to us to bring in private and public grants.
Are there any personnel from Cultural Affairs going to Guadalajara on this?
Yes.
How many?
Probably three.
Will be going on this mission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Labange.
I can't believe we're having this discussion and that you're having to explain something that, to me, is so obvious. But let's walk through a couple of things that are obvious to me. Who are going to be the human beings that are going to be the benefactors of this federal money? Is it Angelinos or Guadalharrians? Is it Mexicans, Canadians, Israelis? Who's going to be the benefit of this? My time, please.
The grants will be given to Los Angeles-based nonprofit arts organizations.
To serve Angelinos?
No, to represent Los Angeles in the Guadalajara International--
But my point is, those organizations are in Los Angeles--
Completely.
--and their everyday responsibility or activities are in and around Angelinos.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
So these organizations, when they get these funds and they're able to utilize them for this particular purpose, will enhance their objectives when it comes to the arts and education in Los Angeles?
Absolutely.
Will this, will this grant enhance in any way the objectives when it comes to your department and the reason why your department exists?
Absolutely. I think that getting this kind of, an award from the National Endowment for the Arts is extremely rare. A typical grant from the NEA is $100,000. So to actually get $1.6 million from the National Endowment for the Arts is just, it's like winning the jackpot. It's so extraordinary, and it speaks volumes about how they see this city as a major cultural capital of the world.
Now, if, in that context, okay, well, please explain for us, of the, what is it, $1.6 million or so?
Yes.
Of the $1.6 million, how much of that is actually going to be utilized within the LA city or the LA basin as it gets utilized?
Well, I mean, you know, grants are given to arts organizations to produce work, to put on exhibitions, to put on theater plays, to whatever. A lot of times, what will happen, or in this case, what we specifically are mandating through the guidelines, is that it's for already existing exhibitions or plays or dance performances. So that money helps to undergird work that is being shown here, and then will travel to represent our community in this international context. So absolutely, it will have an impact on the way that these companies and these organizations. We really want to have a wide range. We want to have small, you know, community-based organizations, as well as the Getty's and the LACMA's, and they're going to be putting in matching dollars of their own that they raised from the private sector. So it's, I think it's a win-win situation.
Now, let me remind ourselves, colleagues, especially as Angelinos and as Americans, is the city finding itself having to fill more and more of the void and responsibility about making sure that our children and our families actually have more access to arts and culture? Because it sounds like the school districts in Los Angeles, there's no exception, have really diminished their activity when it comes to introducing our children to music, to art, taking them on field trips like they used to when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Has that been diminishing dramatically?
It absolutely has been diminishing, and as was mentioned earlier, the department is entering into a very meticulously planned cultural master plan, and one of the things that we're specifically going to be looking at is what is the appropriate role of our agency in delivering youth art services? So that's something that we're very conscious of.
So this grant is something that you, as the head of the department, of this category of activity and priorities for the city, you find this to be, on a scale of one to 10, a one meaning we shouldn't be too excited, a five meaning pretty darn good, or a 10 meaning this is awesome?
It's awesome. It's a 10.
Okay. Well, and one of my staff whispered in my ear a few minutes ago that some radio stations or something picked up on this, or were talking about it, or were saying that the city council was going to spend $1.6 million to go to Mexico or Guadalajara or something like that?
Well, you know, it's my humble opinion that a lot of times, the airwaves and blogs are used to feed misinformation and to stroke the fires, and frankly, I just think that it would be really a black eye on the city's record if we were going to succumb to that kind of, you know, hate mongering that takes place on the airwaves. I'm sorry, but it's just misinformation.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to, on the camera, for the public's view, to be able to explain how awesome this $1.6 million is. And I really can't stand, what I call is a fact of the matter is, every time Mexico is mentioned, or there's some kind of benefit or relationship, what have you, with Mexicans, the radios seem to give misinformation and send people, good Americans, to think the wrong thing.
I agree.
So thank you very much for clarifying that. I take exception when they try to do that kind of thing. It's unfortunate that it sounds like some people on the airwaves may have tried to fuel those flames, unfortunately. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think it's awesome as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas? Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. And we are an international city. We pride ourselves on that. We pride on our diversity, and we love to think that we are on the stage with some other great cities in this world where we could show what LA has to offer. In this case, we're going to show our artists and be a participant, one of the great cosponsors to make this event possible. We should be celebrating the City of Los Angeles, that the NEA chose us--
I know.
--the City of Los Angeles, as one of many competitors that had applied for this, to represent the United States and be a partner in this great fair that is one of the largest in the world.
It is.
And I think this is a wonderful thing. This is a world-class event. I'm surprised, as Mr. Cardenas said, that we're even questioning what this is about. This is a great event that, in the last questioning by Mr. Cardenas, it did get me wondering, what if this was in Europe? Would people would have raised the same questions?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, the city sent a very large exhibition of art to the Papendu in Paris a couple of years ago before I arrived here, and there was great fanfare and a lot of positive publicity, and everybody was joyful, and, you know, more city resources were used on that than this. The entire paycheck is being covered by the federal government in order to put us in the limelight in Guadalajara. I just don't get it.
Thank you. And just like, whether this was in Mexico, and China, and England, or France, we share information amongst each other about safety, about public safety, what are we doing to better address issues of crime? We share information about how we best can educate our children. And here, we're sharing artists--
Yes.
--which is something that has a strong community here in the City of Los Angeles, and I won't say no more, enough has been said, but this is just ridiculous that some radio stations or some of us are even questioning what this is about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Labange.
I'll just be very brief, because I think my colleagues summed it up well, but I would just point out also on this, the importance of this is, you know, our largest source of tourists to Los Angeles comes from Mexico. Our largest trading partner is Mexico, not just for Los Angeles, but for the United States of America. And when we look at how important and how intertwined our histories have been, you know, the cultural expression and the cultural articulation of our two places, our city and the country of Mexico, I think our histories have been intertwined, and anybody who would try to unwrit that wants to deny our own history. And that's too bad, because the ignorance that comes from that means that we've become a more narrowly focused nation, that we are less competitive in a global economy. We watch the spirit of the Olympics, and we see people embracing each other from other cultures. This is very exciting news. And we also, some of the same voices that are complaining about this complain LA never gets its fair share from the federal government.
I know.
Well, here is a great example of us, not only getting our fair share, we got a disproportionate share because of our great activism and because we are a cultural center. So congratulations to you--
Thank you.
--and thank you, colleagues, for pushing this. And thank you, Mr. Labange, for helping point out the positive aspects of this issue today.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
I got it. And, Mr. Zine, just a friendly amendment, that the department notify all council offices, so we could help notify the artists that we know, reach out throughout the city--
Absolutely.
--have a goal to give everybody an opportunity to be part of this as an artist, and explain. And also let you know, anytime you get a federal grant, it is detailed. If we think Laura Chick is tough, the federal government is very tough in this area here, which is good--
Yeah.
--because we're using the people's money right, meeting their goal, National Endowment for the Arts. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Ogilvy, and congratulations on this grant award. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, and close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Thank you.
Next.
Fourth with 36 and 40. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 36 and 40? Okay. All items are going forthwith today, Mr. Labange. Actually, probably this whole week. If we could, Mr. Zuma Dog had used up all his time and has left the council chambers. Take up item 37, 68, and 73. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 43 was called special for cards.
Yes, Ms. Fogler, out in the San Fernando Valley.
Forty-three, yes. That's regarding the cable company increases. Ever since Time Warner took over the area here in the northeast San Fernando Valley, the Adolphia, we were under Adolphia, the prices were around $116. Then they jacked it up. Now, it's climbing up, it's all the way up to $177 to $178 a month. And that's for full cable, for everything, all the channels, everything. And I want to know why they want to go up more, and what's the reason behind it? I mean, this has gone way too far. It's $30, $60, that's a lot of money. So, I mean, how much, what are they going to do about this? I'd like to, if somebody would come up to the table there, to the main table, and discuss this, and tell me why they, what this is about, and what they're doing here. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 52, called special by Councilmember Labange, and there are cards.
Yeah, the only card was Mr. Zuma Dog. Mr. Labange?
Be prepared.
Okay. Be prepared. I know we do have some items coming before public safety to talk about some of our earthquake preparedness in the future, so--
Mr. Weisar.
Yes, to Mr. Weisar. Did you want--
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Labange.
On this issue here, why I called this special, just to remind people, as we were so prepared, this is so important, to make sure that we have it focused on in all aspects, including our own offices and our community organizations.
Madam President--
Yes, Ms. Weisar.
I believe this item should have been sent to AGE, Audit's Governmental Efficiency. There was a clerical error on this. If we could send it to AGE, please?
Sure. We will send it back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 65, called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Mr. Alacon? Mr. Alacon? We'll check to see if he's in the back. Next item.
Item 66, called special for cards.
Two cards in the San Fernando Valley, Ms. Fogler and Ms. Pearman.
Well, I don't know what happened to Sharon Brewer, but the case, anyway, they're still doing it. And this is the reason, what I was talking about earlier on my public comment, talking about the fact is, we're subsidizing these special fee waivers, folks. The Coalition Union, let's stop this and make this whole city pay for these special fee waivers. That's including city council members, all the city, everybody here, LAPD, fire, water and power. Pay for these special fee waivers, folks, instead of paying more, instead of just a few people paying for coal payment increases in their prescriptions, should be the whole city. So Dennis Zine said that back in the fall, that if it's not going to be just, it's not going to be for, if not the whole city, it's not going to be for anybody. So you're not going to work, this plan that the Coalition Union is trying to push this through is not satisfactory, it's not going to work, because sooner or later, they're going to go after your health benefits and your dental benefits, because to pay for these special fee waivers, folks, this is outrageous. Just today, it's almost $40,000 alone. This is an outrage, and the unions just stand by and won't do nothing about it. Get off your bottoms and do something to stop this outrageous thing. They know that they have free cars, free gas, and free cell phones, and they know that they're doing wrong here, and they can't admit it either. The fact is that the SEIU helped them, you know, this Prop S, using the furloughs to use this for the fee waivers, so you can continue your subsidies from the city, those politicians, so they can get reelected. And this is why they have these fee waivers, they have these different special programs. You don't think they're having freebies in the park for nothing? Nothing's free, folks. It's not a free ride, and it's not right.
Thank you. Ms. Pearman?
Yeah. Okay, this is Donna. How dare you ask for new fees, extra fines, make everything go up, DWP, property tax, gas tax, phone tax, trash tax, sales tax, yet you continue to waive fees? Today, fee waivers total $37,675. This is not waiving a few, a small amount for people who need a little extra help. This is a huge bamboozle waste of money, folks. We don't have an endless amount of money available to the city. We have the educational program for $10,000. Sounds like we need a genie to locate more money, along with the memorial dedication, $3,979, AIDS unit events, $4,650. Where's our genie come from? Maybe it's Mr. Garcetti, I don't know. Community event, $1,000, Halloween, extra ads, $300, $979, annual Holy Cross festival, Sounds like you can spend some festival, I'm not going to. Also, the block parties, we have two block parties, but the only good thing is that it's only two block parties. When this happens three times a week, it bankrupts our city. You have to take away services, or come up with new taxes, or raise existing taxes, fines and fees. Yeah, don't rob people from the trust fund. Yet you still give sweetheart deals to CRA, extra feeback to the city council, cars, gas, conventions, and freebies you don't know about, and availability, and availability will raise in July, which is most council members do take. How can you have enough money to waive fees? It's, and it's all about getting reelected, folks. If we play, we pay. Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Item 67 called special for cards.
Ms. Pearman and Ms. Fogler?
Yes, this is a convention fee, center fee waivers, too, that this has got to stop, too. If you want to rob the employees' trust fund from the Coalition of Unions, that's the local 501, the SEIU 771, just to begin with this, telling you $18.25 million to pay for these outrageous fee waivers that you people are continuing, you're, this has got to stop. The people, it's going to continue, it's going to get a lot worse, it's going to get worse, they're going to, they're playing a game here, they're playing pay to play, and they don't care. You make much worse, make less less than water and power, LAPD, and the fire department, and them, they get more raises, they don't have any conditions in their contracts where before, all these are others, unions are garbage collectors, are people who work day and night. How dare you ask them for more money than asking for coal payments on their, increasing their prescriptions, and taking money from their employees' trust fund to pay for these programs? You're an outrage, and you should all be, all resign. The people who should stand up should be Dennis Zine, he said in the fall, that we should all stick together or none at all. The 23 million that you have to make up, it shouldn't be just on our backs, it should be on the whole city.
Thank you. Ms. Pearman?
Can I only speak for, I only want to speak for a minute. Well, I want to say, so we can't have these convention fee waivers, but there's a problem, this one's a vet, so hire a vet, that's unfortunately a good thing, vets who are willing to give up their lives were seriously hurt, but some of the other fee waivers are not good. The ones with the charter schools and the development conference is a wasteful and a conference with the federal government. We need to get the money from somebody else. I want to know what it is, that's what it was. I wanted to know what the development conference, exactly what it is, and so we can see it is. So, we need to find new ways to fund these convention fee waivers. Certainly, there's other ways than trying to take from the city, because we don't have enough money, that's all I want to say.
City employees.
City employees, no, we can't take away the city employees, so with the co-pay, so, you know, you do these convention fee waivers and the trust fund. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Item 72 called special for cards.
Ms. Pearman?
Seventy-two? Is this 72?
Oh, mine's mine.
Oh, it's your turn. Okay.
Anyway, I just want to say, I do not understand why Dennis Zine needs to go as a voting delegate to go to the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach, September 24th to 27th. I need to know how this is going to help the city of Los Angeles? Is this going to be on our behalf, and is this the way, is this the way to pad, so that he can get re-elected? Anyway, I wanted to say that, of course, now, this seems to be going ahead with the city employees with their co-pay, they're going up on their co-pay, and we have our councilmen going over there to Long Beach, so I don't understand why. Perhaps Marion Fogler can talk better on this. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Fogler, I'm sorry, we had reached the, I was informed we've reached the five-minute limit for the day, but thank you, and we'll make sure that you're part of the record. Mr. Zine, I believe, wanted to respond briefly to Ms. Pearman?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge that the city of Los Angeles is a member of the California League of Cities, and the California Cities represents many communities throughout the state of California, and there's other members of the city council who are members of the California League of Cities. We sit on the Board of Directors, and I will be taking the blue line down, I will not be staying in Long Beach, I will be taking the blue line down, attending the meeting, coming back to Los Angeles, and this is a mission to make sure that our local funds stay local and the state doesn't take our funds. We've been working with other cities through the California League of Cities to make sure that we can retain the finances to run our operations. So, again, we are a member city, and I am the voting delegate to the California League of Cities. We'll be meeting in Long Beach, California, it'll be a blue line run to Long Beach, and then back to City Hall. No overnight lodging. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. With that, if we'll open the roll on this item, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. We have item 65, Mr. Alacon. Recognize you at this time.
I'm scrambling for my notes. This is related to legislation here, there. Councilmembers, I rise to ask that we support SB 381 by Senator Calderon, related to online creating an easy voter system in the state of California, to allow people to register to vote online. We've taken care to ensure that the language incorporates security measures, ID requirements and the like, to ensure that this will not be abused. Point out that Arizona and Washington State have developed these programs and are finding that it's increasing their participation in the voting process, and they have not had any problems with fraud and the like. So, simply stated, I'd like to commend Senator Calderon for his leadership on this issue. This is an opportunity for us to open the democracy to those who find it easier to register to vote by going online than having to screw around for a registration form. And so, with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you very much. If we could go ahead and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on this item.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Good. That is approved, and all items will go forthwith today. Excuse me? Oh, I am very sorry. That was my oversight. We did have one card, and we'd like to reopen it to hear from the great Vincent Jones. Come on forward. We're not sure how this is going to turn out, Mr. Jones, but we're feeling good about it, so let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration.
I'll pretend I didn't see that.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is now back before us. My apologies, Mr. Jones. Tell us your good thoughts on this.
Good morning, everybody. First, I want to commend Councilmember Alacon for his leadership on this issue. My name is Vincent Jones, I'm here on behalf of California Common Cause to express our strong support of the resolution and support of SB 381, as it will provide a convenient and secure process for allowing Californians to register to vote, improving access and streamlining the process. It is time that we adapted the current voter registration process to today's technological services, advances. With California leading the revolution in the internet that has transformed all of our lives, and millions of Californians going online to pay their taxes and applying to college, SB 381 is a logical next step. Two other states have already moved to have this type of a system, and since Arizona adopted the system in 2002, they have seen over 70% of their residents voting, registering to vote online. In 2008, when Washington did the same, they have already seen similar numbers in their state. SB 381 will also improve the registration process for both applicants and election officials, as it will remove the need for large amounts of manual data entry and allow for easier matching of duplicate records and other issues that arise when a voter moves from one county to another. Online voter registration will also save precious taxpayer dollars. In 2006, the largest county in Arizona realized cost savings that were equivalent to eight full-time employees due to the reduced data entry needs. Imagine the cost savings to LA County, which is the largest county in the entire country, if we move to a system similar to that in Arizona. In closing, experience has shown that online voter registration, as proposed in SB 381, will encourage new voter participation, provide a more streamlined process, and save precious taxpayer dollars. We urge this passage, and we urge you guys to support this resolution, and we thank you guys for your consideration of this issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. With that, we'll vote on the issue again. We had a speaker, so he might have swayed you, Mr. Smith, so you know, if you want to, you can go for yes. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
All right. We'll keep working on it. Thank you. That is approved. Nate Holden was spiritually channeled into here. All right. With that, we have two specials before us. Special one, if on the.
Yes, Mr. President, there's special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the DWP general manager has determined that the board's action approving a certain payment to the chief operating officer should be vetoed. Immediate action is required to assert jurisdiction of the action and veto it before the council recess and before the board action becomes final after Friday. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
All right. We have that before us on the findings. If nobody else wishes to be recognized on the findings, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the city council, we have that issue before us. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a friendly 245. The general manager of the Department of Water and Power wanted to see this action rescinded, but because the commission is not meeting next week, we need to take action now to veto the decision.
Thank you. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That 245, action is approved. Next special item?
Special two, and the makers of the motion will speak to the findings.
Okay. On that, I will speak to the findings. We have special two before us, colleagues, which because of request to get outside counsel for the city controller is of an urgent nature. We have before us a motion which we were informed about yesterday. Court case is not imminent, but it nevertheless, in preparation for any court case, the issue is imminent of whether or not there's representation, both for the controller and obviously on the city attorney side as well. So, with that, I would ask for your vote to bring this before us, and then we will talk about the substance of the matter. This is just on the findings. So, Ms. Gruel, on the findings?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. Ms. Gruel?
I just, and colleagues many signed on to this. I think we were all surprised and concerned when we heard yesterday that the city attorney had sued the city controller, and as vice chair of the Budget Committee, this was particularly alarming, since we're trying to close a multimillion-dollar budget deficit and are facing another budget deficit this year, potentially $300 million to $400 million. I don't feel we can go to the public at this point in time and say, the best way to spend our taxpayers' dollars is to pay for outside counsel for one elected official against another elected official to defend themselves. And I think that that would be fiscally irresponsible tactic, and believe that it should only be used as a last resort. And so, we want to make sure that we've gone to every other avenue possible for resolving this dispute and that be explored. And so, what the motion indicates today is that we ask to be briefed by the city attorney and the controller to explore all of our options, to figure out what's in the public's best interest, before we engage in an expensive lawsuit and a back-and-forth. And so, that's really the request it is, before asking that lawsuit to be stayed and to come back on September 3rd with a briefing in closed session, if appropriate, with both the city attorney and the controller. So, I'd ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gruel, and thank you for your hard work on this issue. Colleagues, this is a very important issue for us, and one that the voters certainly deserve to have some say on. We have two former charter commissioners here, Ms. Hahn and Mr. Zine, who certainly were witnesses to this issue and a number of different issues, and I think part of, before many of us were here, the history of having two charter commissions, one that was appointed and one that was elected, and maybe in some ways, not as clear direction as we would hope, or at least in the interpretation of different people here on this issue. We know that we can fix that this spring, and we'll be bringing that to committee. I'll refer that as well to Mr. Weezer's committee for audits to look at, because it's very germane to his leadership on that committee, too, so that we can have that before the voters. Personally, I think we need two things here. One, which is to allow all elected officials and the programs that we run, elected officials, to be able to have our programs assessed, just like any department. Just because gang programs, as we talked about during that time with the mayor's office, and they've invited in to make that clear, the controller's office, gang programs move from CDD over to the mayor's office, that seems like a proper way to have accountability to those programs. The flip side, though, is we don't want people using the power of any office to audit individuals just for political rivalries or political gain. We can envision somebody who would come into office and simply use the powers of his or her office solely to go after political rivals, and that is certainly not what I believe Ms. Hahn, Mr. Zine, and others intended on the Charter Reform Commission. So, I think that can be crafted in a way, and that's what we'll be working towards in my committee and Mr. Weezer's committee, to put that before the voters, most importantly, at a time when it costs zero to the taxpayer. Today, we are calling on our city attorney and our city controller to come before us and to discuss whether or not this can be resolved, and I've had private conversations with both that I very much appreciate, and I think there is room for that resolution that's been articulated from both of them, short of going to court. Going to court may have many risks, but the most straightforward reason why we're hoping this discussion can be done, and possibly we as a council can help them achieve some resolution in the shorter term, is we simply can't afford to use public resources right now, as stretched as we are here, with either fees being raised or other programs being cut. We need to make sure that we are resolving this here in the city before we ask the taxpayers to foot a bill to go to court before March, when we can have this resolved and about. So, I thank you, Ms. Gruel, for your strong work on this as well, and council leadership urges you to join us today in moving this forward. Thank you.
No other speakers? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matters approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referral.
Excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, September 23rd, to leave at 11:30 for personal business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, November 7th, for city business. That also meets council policy.
That's approved.
Desk is clear.
Any announcements? No announcements, adjourning motions. All please stand for adjourning motions. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. So, with great sadness, I have two adjourning motions to announce today. The first one is Ramona Leppe-Bernal, who passed away on August 3rd, 2008, from complications of a stroke. Ramona Bernal was born in Ayudla, Jalisco, Mexico, on May 22nd in 1919, and in 1969, after the death of her husband Ignacio Bernal, she moved to Sun Valley Community with her three youngest children, where she resided for 39 years. Throughout her 89 years of life, she took pride in raising her eight children to be honest, respectful, and hard-working individuals, characteristics that were the most important to her. Ramona's favorite day of the week was Sunday, when five generations of the Bernal family would gather at their granny of the week, excuse me, granny at Ramona's house for a weekly barbecue. She will be greatly missed by all the lives she touched. The Bernal family will continue to gather on Sundays in her memory, and the services will be held on Friday, August 8th, 2008, at the San Fernando Mission Cemetery. And she's survived by five sons, Margarito, Forfirio, Lorenzo, Jose Ignacio, and three daughters, Concha, Marta, and Gloria, and 50 grandchildren, and 81 great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren.
Wow. We should all be so lucky. Incredible.
With that, I, thank you very much. All members, thank you. Thank you so much.
Without objection, we'll put all members on it.
Wonderful, humble lady. It is with great sadness that I announce the adjourning motion for Darren Bo Taylor, and I know that several of us are going to have additional comments, such as Ms. Hahn, who knew him very well. He was a resident of Mid-City. Bo Taylor passed away from complications associated with cancer. In the aftermath of the Los Angeles riots, Bo Taylor had once been a detrimental force in the streets of Los Angeles. As a youth in Los Angeles, he was involved in gang activity from the ages of eight, excuse me, 14 to 18. After graduating from Los Angeles High School, he joined the military. After a career in the military, he received an honorable discharge. After leaving the military, he couldn't find work in his community and fell into a spiral of crime and gang violence. of crime and gang violence. After coming home from the service to his country, Bo could not find employment, so he eventually got involved with criminal activities and gang violence. After being shot at several times and having near-death experiences, he began his true calling to inspire, educate, and promote peace within gang communities. Thus, Unity One was established in 1992 after the civil uprising with Rodney King. Bo was on the front line for change and for peace. He saw this opportunity to make a difference in the aftermath of the riots. While many Angelenos feared that the already deadly war between the Crips and the Bloods would escalate further, Taylor used his street connections to broker a truce between the gangs. Quote, "People believed that the Bloods and the Crips couldn't come together," Taylor says, quote, "but from 1992, relationships from Watts to the West Side really started to improve," end quote. Since 1992, he has created over five offspring organizations that work for peace through the intervention and prevention techniques. Also, Unity One has helped over 30 neighborhoods to maintain a ceasefire agreement still in existence today. Thousands of lives have been saved because of the relentless pursuit of peace on behalf of Unity One, its members and women around the country who have never have been considered for employment. Through his work in the community, Bo Taylor has been honored by the city, county, and state for his work in crisis intervention prevention and community affairs. He was also featured in various television and radio shows as well as in newspapers and magazines. A few examples include Larry King Live, Beyond the Glory, and a feature in Newsweek Magazine. In 2002, Bo graduated from California State University, Los Angeles, California. Unity One is one program that teaches life management skills to communities and inmates across the country. Until his recent passing, Bo formed a partnership with USC football coach Pete Carroll and his organization, A Better LA. In a quote, our office received from Pete Carroll, "It's not a shock because he was real sick, but it's an extraordinary, enormous loss in this community," Carroll said. "This is a guy that's dedicated his life to working in the streets and has affected thousands of people and families, and he's affected them in profound ways. All of the people that have worked with him, that know him, that have been around him are just going to be crushed by his loss. We're going to miss him," end quote by Pete Carroll. Carroll tried to talk Taylor, excuse me, tried to talk Taylor out of attending a peace rally at the Coliseum on August 2nd, but realized how important it was to him. Taylor interrupted his treatment in El Salvador to be there. He told the crowd of about 1,000 that he had outlived the doctor's prognosis by three months. "I've been gaining some influence with him lately, but I had none," Carroll said. "He's a very tough-minded, competitive, headstrong guy. He was going to get back up here to touch as many people as he could one more time. He was really functioning and going. It just shows, it just shows you how tough he was in fighting off the inevitable. He doubted the time he was supposed to be able to be around just by persevering. Bo is survived by his children, grandchildren, family, and network of friends and colleagues throughout the country. I must say, in my personal experience in knowing Bo Taylor, he was a tremendous force in bringing the city as far along as we've come when it comes to dealing with the issue of our young people and young adults killing each other on the streets of Los Angeles. He was definitely a positive force. He was an influence on me and much of the legislative work that I've done, and he's been a tremendous influence on the people that he surrounded himself with, and he is the kind of person that truly was there to help people that he had never met. He was there to make sure that he was a positive force in bringing people that too many people want to forget about, and he was the kind of person that was there and a true, loving and caring human being. He was big, he was tough, he was strong, but he dedicated most of the latter part of his life to what he should be doing, and that is being a positive force, not only for his country, but his city, but for his family and his community."
Janice. Thank you. Ms. Hahn? Yeah, we'll do all members. Ms. Hahn, do you want to say anything?
Well, yeah, I just, you really, that was a great adjournment motion, Tony. You really laid it out in a great way about Bo, and if I was to say anything else, you know, it's a strange world out there of intervention, and I think before you did so much work in our committee on intervention, I think many people did not understand it, did not know what it was about, sometimes were critical of it. But I will tell you, I can say without a doubt, because of Bo's work, because of being out there in the intervention world, he undoubtedly saved so many, hundreds of lives with his hard work. He was really on the front lines of our effort to end gang violence in Los Angeles, put himself in harm's way regularly. But I really appreciated when you, Tony, began to bring everyone together in your committee to try to figure out this intervention world and to try to finally put some criteria and some recommendations for the city surrounding intervention. He was right there, coming to committee meetings, testifying, working to make sure that we had a good understanding of it and that we as a city could embrace it in a way that was accountable, responsible, and positive. So we will miss Bo Taylor, a great guy who worked tirelessly to end violence in the streets of Los Angeles. We really owe him a lot.
Mr. Alacon?
Members, I know I come from the San Fernando Valley, but as you could see from Tony Cardenas' comments, I would add to those comments. Bo Taylor had a tremendous effect on my life as well. First of all, he was a very good friend of my daughter and worked with her when she was working in the Attorney General's Office on gang violence, and he was a critical expert in there, trying to engage in that issue. She introduced me to Bo and encouraged me to get to know Bo, and I went on a ride along with Bo in South Central several years ago and spent an entire evening cruising the streets of the southwest side and the south side, and visited Jordan Downs and so many other facilities in the wee hours of the morning. One of the very first places we went to was a coming-out party. A coming-out party is when a young person, in this case, a young man, had been institutionalized in CYA for a couple of years, and he was having a coming-out party because he was getting out of the institution. And I remember asking Bo why he was going to this party, and he said it was critical that he come to the party, even though it was, I think it was about midnight at that point, it was critical that he talk to him because he had an appointment for him to get a job in the morning. And he told me that if he didn't make it to the interview in the morning, that we would probably lose him to the institution once again. So this was a man who was dedicated. He was dedicated. He would, he never gave up on people that so many others have given up on. He believed that we could turn people around. He demonstrated that. He was an example of that, and he wanted to contribute good things. He did have a tough style. He did have an in-your-face kind of approach, and some people were offended by that. But frankly, that was Bo, and he was so passionate about his issue that he was, he wanted to demonstrate that and sometimes would project this tough appearance. But deep in his heart, he was a very caring individual. He cared not only about those who had found themselves in a cycle of crime and violence, but he was a very caring person for the city of Los Angeles. I believe that we are going to have a big hole in our intervention strategy in the city of Los Angeles because he represented so much of that strategy, and I'm only hopeful that his work with the community will inspire one, two, or three, hopefully a whole dozen of other advocates to fill his shoes as big as they were to ensure that we do not slip on the intervention strategies, particularly in South Los Angeles. Bo was a tremendous contributor to Los Angeles. Once he moved beyond the life of crime, he turned himself around, and that demonstrates that others can turn around as well. I will miss him, and on behalf of my daughter, I also am sad to adjourn in his memory.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to comment. I saw Bo just, August 2nd, he was at Pete Carroll's LA Peace Live Peace at the Coliseum. I did not know he was ill until that day, and he was there talking to young people about how to straighten out their lives, and I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to hear him on his radio show, but he had a very unique way of giving very common sense direction to people. He took no real rationalization of why people would get themselves into problems. He came from a background of understanding what it meant to get involved negatively with the law and do things that were not appropriate, but he learned from them. And it was just interesting to see that in the obvious pain that he was in that day, that he still came out to be with Pete Carroll and to be there on that march. But again, to see him as what you view as being a very healthy person, to see him that day, you could tell that he was in big pain and also that he was suffering a great deal. But he put all that on the back burner to be there, to be with Pete Carroll and do that peace walk.
Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President and members, and I want to make a request to Mr. Cardenas. Based on my relationship with him, if it's okay with you, I'd like to be a co-signer on the, where I actually sign it. I think it might mean something to some of his family and friends. Mr. Alacon, everybody's been very eloquent, but I do disagree, Richard, with one thing that you said. There won't be a void, and there won't be a void because Bo trained other people to come in behind him. And Bo's style evolved. He was this tough guy from the street, but as he matured, he understood when to be tough and when to be soft, or when to adjust his, the way that he acted. I'm proud to say that I have a close working relationship with the intervention agencies in my area, similar to Janice's, and I know Richard and Tony have a relationship. And every Friday, there would be a meeting of this organization called Project Save that works through, Community Build is the umbrella organization, and that's where I do camping and fishing and I take kids places, and we have midnight basketball, and we have co-ed softball, and all of these things. Bo was an integral part of all of that. He was one of the members of what we called our board, where we would have these individuals sitting around circle like King Arthur, and they would discuss various issues that were happening in the community and what they could do to go in and to stop them. I mean, Bo was committed, very creative, and I've known him before he created Unity One. He was so committed to this life of turning individuals' lives around. I'll never forget, in 2004, while campaigning for a presidential candidate who will remain nameless, Charmette and I and my team from Sacramento were in Missouri. It was five degrees. I go into the state capital of Missouri and run into Bo Taylor, who was in Missouri, meeting with a delegation of members who were experiencing problems similar to the ones that we experience in our districts on a daily basis. He was there trying to give his guidance and his expertise. The last thing that I will say where it relates to Bo, well, two things. First of all, Bo, I didn't know your name was Darren. If you would have told me that, I would have been teasing you a little bit. But Bo, I was at Bowling Alley in my district, and we have a nice little cafe in there called Maria's Cafe, and I saw Bo in this cafe not too long ago, and he was there with his doctor. His doctor had flown up from South America, and it was such a shock to see him in the state that he was in at that point in time. His face was just swollen tremendously, and the doctor was telling him that he shouldn't, he put heat on it and he should have put ice on it or something like that. And he was in there with his doctor and another member of the community, planning ways in which to turn young lives around. It was around the time we were kicking off the co-ed softball that we have for the intervention teams throughout the city. And the last thing that he said to me was, "I will see you at one of the games, and I will try to make it this Saturday," because we had a big press conference, and I got a message from one of his top lieutenants. He just wasn't feeling well. So this is a shock, Bo, and you will be missed, but because of him and other great unsung heroes, I think we will be able to have a positive effect in turning the lives around of so many young people. And Mr. Cardenas, it's my understanding that our staffs are in communication, there's the new training that they do for the, I think that we should make a request to the mayor's office that that program be named after Bo Taylor. And I think that with support from the council, and I don't think we have to do a motion, I think we could just make a request, and that I'm sure Mr. Carr and those responsible would agree that this is the least that we could do. So thank you, and goodbye, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I ask colleagues that we adjourned today in memory as well of somebody who had a big influence on Los Angeles. He came into this world on August 20th of 1942, far away from Los Angeles, in a tin shack in rural Covington, Tennessee. But unfortunately, on August 10th, Isaac Hayes, the singer-songwriter, TV and film actor, the Academy Award winner, Emmy-nominated, Grammy Award-winning, called The Black Moses. He was an Afrocentric icon. He was made a king in Ghana, all of these things. He passed away. About a year and a half, I had the pleasure of having dinner with Mr. Hayes at the city club just here downtown, discussing what had been a long put-off star on the Walk of Fame, which he most certainly qualifies and deserves, and we had in motion, and fortunately, God took him before that day has arrived. But he's somebody who lost his mother when he was a baby. His father left the family, and he was raised by his grandparents, who were former sharecroppers. They moved to Memphis, and he used to alternate between going to school and going to work so that he could have clothes and a meal. He slept in cars, but suddenly this gift of music when he was at school was discovered, and he became an incredible songwriter. He became somebody who was lauded throughout his acting career. He actually just wrapped his latest movie with Bernie Mac, ironically, both of them having passed away in the last week. He was found by his wife, Adjoa, right next to a treadmill downstairs of his home, where he was clear he was still running forward throughout life as he did. But from the Grammy-winning Black Moses in 1971, before that, Hot Buttered Soul in 1969, and many albums, he's best known for his classic Shaft, which won the Academy Award for Best Song, and he had two other Grammys, was inducted in 2002 in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, was, came to be known by a new generation by South Park, where he played the role of chef. And when he was first approached by Matt Stone and Trey Parker, South Park's creators, he thought they were playing a joke on him, but they assured him they were not, they wanted him to be a character. And Hayes said he responded, "You all some crazy white boys." And he certainly was marked by the humor, the passion, and the brilliance of his work, and he's somebody who will be dearly missed. May he rest in peace. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I'd also like to adjourn today in the memory of the grandfather of my son-in-law, John Yates. His grandfather, John Frank Couture, passed away this weekend. He was 91 years old. He was born to Belgium immigrants that came to the United States through Ellis Island. They moved to California when John was one, and he was raised in Huntington Park. He married his wife, Eunice, and they settled in Norwalk. He worked as a milkman for the Rockview Dairy and the Golden Poppy Dairy for 40 years and loved his job. He later retired in Apple Valley with Eunice, to whom he was married for 57 years before she passed away. He survived by his two daughters, Linda Brown and Sherlin Yates, four grandchildren, Kim, Mitch, who is with the LA Fire Department, Philip and John, my son-in-law, as well as five great-grandchildren, Brandon and Kylie, and then my grandchildren, McKenna, Brickland, and Josiah. He was a great, dear, sweet man, and we all really always enjoyed being in his presence and in his company when we ever had family get-togethers. So he will be greatly missed, but I know he's been extremely sad since his wife passed away, and now they will be back together again.
Mr. Alakon.
Yes, members, I wanted to adjourn in the memory of Laura Lorraine Point, who was born in Inglewood but moved to Mission Hills for most of her life. During those 43 years, she enjoyed family, school, and softball, but I'm recognizing her now because of her tremendous work at Via Vanta in Boquima, where she dedicated her life for the last nine years to helping women with children affected by alcoholism and drug addiction. I don't need to tell you how hard that work is, but she particularly loved her job and particularly the work that she was able to do with the children who were in the program as a result of their mother's rehabilitation. She also, of course, enjoyed her own son's interest in science and astronomy and bottom of telescope that together they used to explore the stars and planets right from Mission Hills. She loved her family and community, and at 43 years old, passed away far too young, especially for the people at Via Vanta and her family. It was just March 2008 this year that we adjourned in memory of her mother, Alice Maypoint, who was also from Mission Hills. The services were held on Saturday, August 2nd. She is survived by Anthony Points, her son, Robert Points II, her brother, and Sharon Points, her sister-in-law, and we want to extend our condolences to all of her family and friends.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange.
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of the tragic loss of nine Oregon firefighters who came to California to help California in the fire up in the Shasta Trinity National Park. Sean Blazer, Scott Charleston, Matthew Hammer, Edric Gomez, Brian Rich, David Steele, Jim Rampage, Steve Grenell, and Roke Swannenberg, all Oregonians. And Mr. Clerk, if you could present that, we'll forward it to the governor of Oregon so we can get it to the families. As said, we all join in the journey for these brave young men.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Bernie Mac, and the president mentioned him earlier, another icon lost on Saturday, August the 9th. He died of complications from pneumonia. He suffered from a chronic autoimmune disorder that causes inflammation in tissue, most often the lungs. We recall his career that from 2001 to 2006, he starred in The Bernie Mac Show. He also simultaneously was part of the Kings of Comedy, earned an Emmy for writing for executive producer Larry Wilmore, and he received two Emmy nominations for acting in his sitcom. Also, he had one of the leading roles in 2001 in the Ocean 11 film, and also appeared in Ocean 12 in 2004 and Ocean 13 in 2007. He was born in 1957 in Chicago, raised by his mother and grandparents. His mother died when he was only 16, and his brother and father and grandmother died not long after. At 19, he married his high school sweetheart and was a father at 20. He started doing professional stand-up comedy in 1977 and was inspired by many black comedians before him. He also, in 2005, starred in Guess Who with Austin Crutcher and a comedy remake of The Spencer Tracy, Catherine Hepburn, Sidney Poitier, drama Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. More recently, completed a filming of Soul Men, musical comedy with Samuel L. Jackson. He survived by his wife, Rhonda, and daughter Janice, and granddaughter.
Thank you. Another adjournment motion. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will next be in session tomorrow. That'll be August 13th on Wednesday. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alakon.
The Judiciary Committee was scheduled to meet at 2:00. We will convene at 2:30 at City Hall East.
Ad hoc homeless committee will meet just after this as well.
Yeah, that meeting is at 17th floor, City Hall East. Thank you.
Thank you. And the ad hoc homeless committee for Ms. Perry will meet right after this. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us. Today's Tuesday, August 12th, 2008. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners. Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Let the record reflect. Commissioners Pacheco, Mack, Saltzman, and Scovin are present, and we have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Commissioned Business, Agenda Item One. Commissioner Saltzman.
Thank you. I was away last week, so my activities were limited. As I was explaining earlier this morning with Commissioner Mack, I had the opportunity for the first time to download a session of the commission. I don't know if other commissioners have done that, but by the end of last week, staff had that already online. So I was able to download that and then watch it on the plane coming back yesterday, which was an interesting thing to do and encourage you, if you have the time and the opportunity at some point. And obviously, a good thing for the public to do and to know about. One other item I wanted to raise on our agenda is Item 8D that I'm guessing we will receive and file. It's a report about the Explorer Post donations that I had asked for, and I want to particularly thank the department staff for such a prompt and thorough response to it. It answered the questions that I was asking. I would like some additional information that I'll work with Mr. Tefank to then work with the department on, but there's no urgency about that. That broader issue will come back, and I'd like this to come back with it. But I'll work with Mr. Tefank about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scovin?
Thank you. There's four items to report on. First, as with my fellow commissioners, I attended a National Night Out event. In my case, it was in the Stafford Valley at Warner Park. Very, very well attended, great support from the department, and a good community outpouring of the willingness to have personal involvement making our communities better. Chief Bratton was also there at that event, and I know that people appreciated your attendance very much. I attended a meeting of the Los Angeles Police Emerald Society, at which author James Elroy was the speaker. Went to a really wonderful roll call at Foothill area. Had a chance to address the officers for a brief period about what the commission's doing, but more important than that, I listened to the roll call training that each of our officers is receiving on autism. The people putting these on are volunteers. They drive themselves there, they don't get paid, and they have an incredibly well-put-together program to help our officers understand autism and its various forms and what it means when they contact personal hazard. It could be as simple as people who are autistic are very literal. So if the officer say, "Put your hands where I could see them," that person might raise their hands right in front of the officer's face where they could see them. So it was just a lot of really helpful things. What was also interesting was the number of members of the department who have family members with various degrees of autism. So it was a tremendous program. I really want to commend and compliment you, Commissioner Pacheco, because you were very much the driving force in that happening. It's tremendous. Finally, had a meeting this morning along with Commissioner Orden, and it was regarding the CRE program. It was the Crime Reduction and Enforcement Warrant Group. Approximately 100 officers who worked throughout the city. And we met with Captain Scott, Commander Gray, and Chief Payciger for a complete review of that program. And I think, in looking at the statistics, any observer would say it's a very effective, outstanding program to address crime problems and crime spurts in the city. So it was a well-worthwhile and productive meeting, and I appreciate the department for putting together that presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mack?
Thank you. I participated in our National Night Out at Wilshire area, and we had a good turnout from the community. And we marched on Washington Boulevard from the Nate Holden Center to La Brea, and then came back. And there was also great support from the fire department as well. And our commanding officer, Eric Davis, was there. But also, we just lost him, but a very, very beloved slow, Eric Molinato, who was recently promoted to sergeant. He's now assigned to Central. He's been there for about a month, but he came back. It's sort of his last involvement, and he received several resolutions and plaques, and just a tremendous outpouring of support and admiration for him and all of the outstanding work that he has done over the years in Wilshire. So it was a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Mack. I have a couple of special guests with me today, and if I can have them stand, Wendy Cervantes and Will Cuffel. They're interns with my office. They're both high school students. They're associated with the Constitutional Rights Foundation. And so they've joined us for the summer, and they're our guests today. They're beginning a tour of some of the department's facilities later. So thank you for being here. In terms of last week, I also participated in National Night Out. I was in the Newton area, and it was extremely well-attended. A terrific, terrific night out. And also, later in the evening, I went to the Central Division's National Night Out, and both demonstrated really the terrific relations between the community and the police. And to me, that's what it's all about. And so it was a very fantastic evening. I also, yesterday, participated as a speaker, and Chief, I know you were a speaker as well, for the 32nd Annual Junior Statesman Symposium. It's high school students who meet with various leaders in the community, and we have the opportunity to speak with them. And they, more importantly, have the opportunity to ask questions, and they do, and they're terrific questions by very talented high school students. Lastly, this weekend, I attended the Wilshire and Traffic Division Open Houses. And again, it was really very, very well-attended, and it was good to see the community and the police interacting in such a very positive way. So that was last week. Agenda Item Two, reported of the Chief of Police, Chief Bratton.
The report for this morning is for the period ending August 9th, 2008. Good news continues on the crime reduction. Homicides down 6.6 percent. Rapes down 15.8 percent. Robberies down 6.3 percent. Aggravated assaults down 6.4 percent. Overall violent crime reduction is 6.7 percent. I referenced that since 2002, that reduction in violent crime is 49.7 percent. In property crime categories, burglary's down 5.4 percent. Theft in vehicles down 5.1 percent. Personal other forms of theft down 3.6 percent. And auto theft down 7.6 percent. Total property crime down 5.4 percent. Property crime reductions since 2002 are 27.9 percent. Overall Part I crime reduction for the period ending August 9th, 2008 is 5.6 percent reduction. Overall Part I crime reduction since 2002 is 34 percent. On the gang-related crime category, similar reductions in every gang crime category year-to-date. We've got a 21.7 percent decline in homicides, gang-related homicides, since 2002. That reduction has been 54 percent in gang-related homicides. Overall gang crime for the period ending August 9th, the one-year decline is 12.9 percent since 2002. That decline is 28.1 percent. Good news is that all four bureaus are experiencing crime declines this year. Central is down 1.4 percent. South is down 6.5 percent. Valley is down 4.9 percent. And West Bureau is down 10.1 percent. Since 2002, Central has seen a 38.5 percent decline in Part I crime. South Bureau has seen a 35.1 percent decline. Valley has seen a 27.5 percent. And West Bureau has got a 36.4 percent decline. Those figures also are reflected in gang crime reductions. Central has seen a 6.1 percent decline versus the same time last year. South Bureau, 12.3 percent decline. Valley Bureau, 19.3 percent decline. And West Bureau, 27.8 percent decline. The press availability with the mayor last week on the crime numbers, we pointed out that every crime category for both gang and Part I is down, and that the six-year trend is down dramatically, as I've just reinforced. And the projection going forward for the remainder of this year, Chief Payciger's goals are that that crime will, that numbers will continue to decline, as referenced by this morning's homicide report. As of this morning, as of midnight last night, we've had 224 homicides in the city so far this year versus last year. At the same time, we'd had 244. So homicide decline is now 8.2 percent. And for the month of August, we had 41 last year so far. In the month of August, through the period ending August 11th, we've had 10. So we're having a very, very quiet summer overall in terms of versus last year, and certainly six years ago. That's the crime report. The police recruiting is continuing, that still getting very large numbers of applicants coming in. Still working with department personnel on the background screening processes to ensure that the applicants coming in are being prioritized and moved through that process. That's the report for this morning.
Thank you, Chief.
One other thing, if I may mention, that I think most of you are aware. The community activist gang interventionist, Bo Taylor, who is, you know, from the police perspective, one of the more legitimate personalities in that field. He just passed away within the last several days from a bout with throat cancer. So that's certainly a loss for his community, as well as the police relationship. We had very good working relationships with him over time. So I just wanted to reference that also.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief, when I speak with various groups in the community, I often ask, "What are some of the challenges?" And often, the response is, "Don't always feel safe in our persons. Don't always feel safe in our possessions." These are key issues that people in the community want to feel comfortable with. So when I hear you talk about the reductions in crime, we're talking about the protection of real people. This has a real effect on the community. And this is no mistake that crime is going down in Los Angeles. It is the good, hard work of you and the police department. So I commend you on your efforts, and you are directly addressing issues raised by the community when it comes to the community-police relationship by suppressing crime. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate hearing those numbers on a weekly basis. So thank you.
Well, those numbers, we talk about numbers, percentages, but behind those numbers are, in fact, real people. So in the violent crime category, going back to 2002, in this period, there were 30,000 people who had been the victims of violent crime in 2002, up till this point. This year, there have been 15,000. That's 15,000 fewer Angelenos who've been the victims of rapes, assaults, murders, shootings. You just can't dismiss that. Those are real numbers, and those are real people behind those numbers. The department's been doing, from my perspective, nothing short of an outstanding job in terms of the thing that we're charged most significantly with, which is dealing with crime.
I greatly appreciate it, and it really is a testament to all the systems in the department that are working so well. So thank you. I do understand, as to Agenda Item Two, we have a comic card. Is that right, Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir. Mr. Terry Wilburn?
Terry Wilburn. On the commission, I mean, the chief valuation, from my understanding, the kidnapping rate is high. We have moved people here from various different states. So in that, it is high. If you can get 701 people in one area of Los Angeles, in Compton, then you can get 500 right here on Sunset, where in fact, that the officers arrested certain people a couple months ago. The girl went back home, and then they re-kidnapped her. If we can take, go out to another district or another city and rob someone. That woman worked it for a pay program. And then if we live in Baldwin Hills, and they go out to Palmdale and drop bodies in this water, or go out to Lake LA on the 240th, you find more bodies that was moved by your officers and others. And so I believe the murder rate is high, and it's not just a book. If we can, if they can, I kidnapped a person because I wanted the documentation, because on the simple fact that that person's been altering records for Rock Roder and their organization for five years. So I took him, brought him back home. After the fact, I got the letter. Now, in doing so, I placed a court file. May I have a little bit more time?
No, thank you, sir. Agenda Item Three, reported of the Executive Director, Mr. Tefank. Agenda Item Four, report of the Inspector General, Mr. Barat. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Nicole Verchon for Andre Barat. No report. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I note the items in Agenda Item Five, the information items, for the record. We have a presentation today, and to assist us with that, Captain Rigoberto Romero, if you're here, if you can stand forward and help us with this. It's a very special presentation.
Yes, good morning, members of the Police Commission. Chief Bratton, I'm here this morning to really celebrate the work and really true dedication of one of our detectives at Newton area. Detective Alex Arredondo, if he can step forward, please. He came to me about a year ago with an idea of putting together a series of photographs of candid shots of our officers out in the field. Included in that was also candid shots of our civilian employees and members of our mechanic crew. I was very pleased to hear the idea that he had, so we made it happen. We asked for some assistance and contributions from our agents, our police organizations, like the LA Police Relief Association, Police Federal Credit Unit, and also the Police Protective League, all who contributed to this effort. If you wouldn't mind bringing some of the photos forward for the commission and the chief to look at, please. Alex took on this huge responsibility and put a lot of his personal time into these efforts. At this time, Newton has close to 200 photographs that are throughout the hallways of the division. And our goal here was to really signify and put together into a mosaic of pictures the great effort and dedication that our cops really exhibit on a daily basis out in the community. And these are just some examples of how the type of work that our officers do. And Alex was able to capture that for us. So I wanted to really bring that forward to the commission and also to the chief, because he did an extraordinary job to change, really all for the better, the morale of our officers at Newton, and really capture some very special moments that otherwise would have been lost and only in the minds of those cops. So Alex, I wanted to thank you for the work that you did and for the dedication that you exhibited to not just Newton Division, but also to our fine police department. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scovin?
Thank you. Many of you know this, but the presentation this morning was a surprise to Alex. He did not know why he was coming down here. And having known him for almost five years and observed his work in the field, and having pretty intimate knowledge of the type of person he is, I'm so proud as a commissioner and as a friend. He's a person who has a lot of love for people, whether it be members of the department, or the community, or the city of Los Angeles. He's a very giving, wonderful person who cares a lot. And the work that he did is really kind of a gift of love to the men and women at Newton and this department, and to the community. And that's very typical of Alex Arredondo. So congratulations to you, and thank you for being the type of person that you are, and for being such a great cop.
We have a certificate of commendation from the Police Commission that will join you and take a photograph with you, if that's okay. But I'd like to read a portion of it. I won't read the whole thing. It'd take a while. But it's the members of the Los Angeles Police Commission wish to take this opportunity to salute and commend you for your outstanding vision that strengthened morale amongst your peers. You had a vision to document the courageous and difficult work that you and your peers face on a daily basis. To make this vision a reality, you took numerous photographs that did just that. They depicted the dangers that officers face every day, including coming to the aid of citizens in need of help. The final result was an outstanding collection of images, well-put-together, that are displayed in the halls of the Newton area. So thank you, and we're going to make this presentation.
And we were teasing when we saw some pictures out there before, when Alex didn't know what was happening. He held them up, and we said, "Gee, these are out of focus and wrongly cropped." Just to see what kind of reaction he'd get, but we were just teasing about that, Alex. But we're just teasing about that, Alex.
Hey, Agenda Item Seven is our consent agenda item. There's no items. Agenda Item Eight, we have two verbal presentations, 8A and B. And I would propose pulling D. Unless the commissioner wants to pull Item C, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval of regular Agenda Item 8C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. 8A is a verbal presentation and update with regard to the Community Police Advisory Board, representative regarding community-initiated problem-solving, including crime strategies and other programs and goals within the Devonshire area.
All right, come on up. Thank you for the invite. My name's Sean Kane. I'm the commanding officer of Devonshire area. I have with me Mr. Larry Stern, who is my CPAB co-chair.
Good morning.
Take this opportunity to tell you some of the things we're doing with the CPAB at Devonshire. Our meetings consist of a crime briefing by me. And then we get to a roundtable where we discuss issues of concern with the CPAB members that sometimes are invisible to the police as they patrol by. Community concerns of narcotics trafficking, those type of issues. Some things that require CPAB or the Slow's to delve in a little bit more to solve these issues, be it quality of life or crime issues. We've also had some presentations by department units that are of interest. The Counterintelligence Bureau has come and talked to us. We've had the Sex Crimes Unit come and talk to us, give the CPAB members a full briefing of what's going on in the department. Some of the goals that CPAB has undertaken in 2008 are to tackle some pretty tough issues. Group homes are prevalent in Devonshire. And a group home, for those of you that don't have the intimate knowledge that the field troops have, is they take at-risk youth and put them in a house in a residential neighborhood with virtually no permitting, no conditional use permits, no controls. And surprised as it may be, some of our crime trends are right where those are. So this year, the CPAB has undertaken to have a district meeting. We're bringing some of the political leadership to talk about some of the efforts that they can make at the state level and at the city level to put some controls on those group homes, because the police department often discovers these homes through visits when we make an arrest. The school district has school kids that are at these homes, and their system for truancy, which is important to us, does not name the child. And it's an automated system. That system will call this group home and say, "Sean, it will say, 'Your child has not attended school today.'" Well, if they have 15 kids in the home, they don't know who it is. And the level of management at these homes is virtually, there are no controls on that. So we're going to bring that in. We're going to talk about that on September 11th. We're going to see what kind of progress we're going to make. And the next thing that they'd like to tackle is some type of controls on the recycling of materials, copper theft, metal recycling. Because we get a lot of copper theft of big dollar amounts, sometimes from DWP yards. And it's hard for me to envision that you could go to a recycling yard and say, "That 200 pounds of copper, yeah, I found it in a dumpster", and they give money for it. So we're looking for some controls on that, be it simple controls, maybe a photograph of the person that's getting the material recycled, and so we can go back and talk to them about where they got it. Larry Stern indicated a desire to address the group, and I know you want to hear from him. So I'll bring up Larry Stern. He's a recently-appointed CPAB co-chair.
Thank you, Captain Kane. As Captain Kane mentioned, my name is Larry Stern. Oh, by the way, good morning, members of the Police Commission, and good morning, Chief Bratton. Public speaking is not my forte, and I didn't realize I was going to be speaking in front of a vast, distinguished array of an audience here. So please just bear with me. A few of the things I'm going to say are going to be echoed from what Captain Kane already mentioned. I was asked to join CPAB back in 1993 by the late Captain Vance Proctor. So I've been on the board for about 15 years. And back in January, when our prior co-chair retired, Captain Kane asked if I would become the co-chair, which I gladly accepted. In the 15 years I'm there, I've seen four command staff changes, starting out with late Captain Proctor, to Captain Carrery, to Captain Samansky, now Commander Samansky, and now Captain Kane. And the one thing that's been in unison for all four command staffs have been the amount of camaraderie that they have seen in the community. Everybody seems to agree upon that. We have a tremendous bond in the Northridge-Denvershire area. Few of the things that we, I think we were the inception on back in the middle 90s was doing Police Appreciation Day, which happens in the second week, I believe, in November. And the amount of volunteers bringing food, doing yellow ribbons, has been tremendous. I had a store in Northridge Mall, which we closed, and we just had it for the police and OBB and the city council. And we probably got about 300 people showing up for that. One of the restaurants in the mall also catered that. So it was just a great event to show our appreciation for everybody that in the department. Other things that have been done over the Urban Murals, and also, besides CPAB, many of our members are also members of PALZ and SOLID. And I'm not sure if all of you are aware of what PALZ has accomplished in the past five years. But they are, a new building is going to be, being built on Parthenia, about half a mile east of Tampa Avenue. It's about 6,000 square feet. About $2.5 million has been raised towards that project. And the amount of time and effort put into that over the five-year period has been incredible, especially going through the bureaucratic red--